I could talk whale. Good evening, Angie. She's gonna let us know and she's... I assume she'll let us know, or? Like on air. On air. I think we can see here. Oh, Wheel of Fortune's on. No.
You didn't know we saw that?
I'll buy of all. Yeah, that's Wheel of Fortune, alright. You're not on TV, Joe. Okay, ready? We'll call the November Assurance County Planning Commission meeting to order. Please rise and say the pledge allegiance. Welcome to the meeting. What we're gonna do is we'll have introductions first. Rich, why don't you start on your end?
Richard Blankish, member at large.
Ken Mossman, District Four, representative.
Mike Perle, District Five.
Jeff Bertram at large.
Jason Wienerman, District One.
Sean Blackburn, District Two.
Joe Persky, County Commissioner. I will not be voting tonight on these issues, but I will be voting when they come to the board.
Thank you. And Jason Cronin is excused. He's out of town, so he could not be with us tonight. When your item comes up, please come up way to the left of the podium. It says applicant. That's where you'll sit, and then the staff will give the review. You can introduce yourself and add anything to the staff comments, and we'll open up the public hearing. And then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have discussion, make a recommendation to the county board. So, item number one is a conditional use permit for a major shoreline alteration. Scenic specialties on behalf of Lawrence and Betty Zins. Staff report, Nick Newman.
Mr. Chair, members of the-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Nick. I forgot to mention, Agenda Item Seven has been tabled by the applicant. So if you're here for Agenda Item Seven, you don't need to stay here. You certainly can, but we will not be considering Agenda Item Seven because it's been tabled by the applicant. Thank you, Jason, for reminding me. So we're back to Agenda Item Number One. Staff report, Nick Newman.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this is a major shoreline request on Kramer Lake by St. Joseph. The property size is about a half an acre lot with roughly 22% impervious coverage. Vegetation meets the minimum vegetation standards for the lot required for shoreline alteration permits. The septic system is considered compliant, had a compliance inspection in September. And there's currently no erosion really happening on the property. Back in August, I did a site visit for the application. I actually talked with the property owner while on-site for that. We talked about the project as it was proposed and everything. We kinda went through that together on-site and how it related to the ordinance. Essentially, this project is proposing doing a retaining wall roughly three to five feet from the ordinary high water level. Crossed pretty much the entire lot frontage. And then it would define a 15-by-10-foot sand blanket area, a little bit of topographic alteration, movement for the wall construction, and then a few steps. They are proposing some vegetation. It is largely ornamental plants with just one pagoda dogwood and a few black-eyed susans as the natives that are proposed. Currently, there is native vegetation that exists around some rock riprap at the shoreline. As I mentioned, it is stable. There's no erosion concerns at this time. If the Planning Commission would want to recommend approval, there would be two listed conditions there that would be recommended as minimum conditions if recommended for approval. We did get SWCD comments. There was no other testimony submitted by the public for this request. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Members, if you visited the site when I call your names, say yes. If you did not, say no. Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Ken?
I was there last month.
Mossman. Mike Perle?
Yes.
I visited the site, Jason.
I was there last month as well.
Sean?
Yes. Yes.
Joe, okay. Applicant introductions, please state your names for the record and your address.
I'm Larry Zins. I'm the property owner. I live at 29449 Kramer Lake Road.
Ben Stockinger with Scenic Specialties. Shop address is 31101 County Road 133, St. Joseph.
Okay, thank you. Do you wanna add? Okay, Mr. Zins, you'll have to talk closer to the microphone.
My name... Is that better? My name is Larry Zins. I'm the property owner. 29449 Kramer Lake Road, St. Joseph.
Make sure when you look if your green light is on on your microphone when you're talking. Thank you. Anything you wanna add to the staff report, either one of you two?
So currently, the landscaping in the shoreline is, as you saw, it was very sporadic rock placement. Larry and Betty are getting elderly, and they're looking... As you can see, there's a lot of weeds that are taking over, and we're just looking to create something that will be lake-friendly and then easier to maintain as well. We want to... We're looking to put in just one row of boulders, 24-to-36-inch boulders. That will bring our elevation up. We'd like to create a berman divert, if you will, behind the... Use the planting bed in the lot area to create, you know, a berman divert before it hits the boulder wall so that the water isn't washing through our planting bed. And then add the vegetation for, you know, extra erosion control and then site as well. So biggest thing here is Larry's having a hard time being able to maintain, you know, and take care of all the weeds that are coming through in the existing landscaping. We're looking to simplify that in a more manageable way.
Okay. That original picture, go to that first picture that you showed. One more back. The one with the kayaks. I was wondering which one was Larry's and which one was Betty's. There's two kayaks on the beach there. I'm kidding. Little bit of humor at the beginning of the meeting doesn't hurt. Okay? We're gonna go to the public hearing. Is there anyone here or on Zoom wanting to say something about Item Number One? Anyone in the audience or on Zoom that wants to comment? One last time, is there anyone here or on Zoom that wants to comment on Agenda Item Number One? If not, motions in order?
Jason Wienerman moved to close the public hearing.
Jason moves to close the public hearing. Ken seconds it. I assume there's no correspondence?
That's correct, no correspondence.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, public hearing is closed. Discussion among members, questions?
Do you have any headphones around here somewhere?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, District One. On the landscape plan, this is... The proposal appears to be pretty heavily landscaped with a variety of native and non-native species. Is there... Have you given any consideration to maybe restoring that site to a lower, even lower maintenance, native planting, native shoreline restoration? It might look a little weedier, but it might have more stability in the site?
Either one, Ben?
I think we'd be open to that. My understanding was that the county is looking for a lot of plant material along lake shores. That's why we propose the heavy landscaping and plants. A lot of the plants that we did propose, there's quite a few shrubs in the plan that have extensive root systems. You know, once established, they'll definitely... That's a lot of good erosion control. You know, if there's a number of other plans that, you know, be recommended of us to incorporate, I think we'd be definitely open to that. Would you agree, Larry?
Yes.
Any other comments?
Looking at the proposal-
Rich?
Rich Blankish, member at large. Looking at the proposal, I mean, it's not changing anything in regards to... There is no indication of soil erosion now. And what are considered weeds may be deep-rooted natural vegetation that is anchoring that shoreline. The rock riprap is integrated with it, or the weeds are integrated with it, so it's kinda hard to determine what's going on there. But the other thing that... Being out there, I suspect the lake is down a couple feet from the drought. Yeah, just looking at what was going on with the sand and everything. But truthfully, I just don't know if this plan fits what the ordinances are in regards to shoreline stabilization. And in this case, there wasn't erosion, so we don't have to worry about addressing stabilization. Correct?
Yep.
So I don't think the project actually follows the ordinance that we have.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Persky?
And I take a look at the recommendation from Greg Berg. You know, he cites a couple of items, Section 10 to 14. And I'm just wondering, Nick, you know, what does that refer to?
Nick?
Yep. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, that section of the ordinance is the one that relates to just general, from what I remember, general stabilization and techniques to be utilized in shoreline alterations. So where Greg mentions bioengineered solutions and addressing erosion problems, that's what that portion of the ordinance talks about. And wherever possible, you know, where there is stabilization that needs to take place, there's preference towards using vegetation and bioengineering methods rather than hardscapes like rock or walls or things like that.
And so just looking at what I'd seen out there as well, it appears that that riprap that's on the shoreline does appear to hold that shoreline in place. And it's a matter of, well, we don't have the picture, but it's a matter of the eye of the beholder as far as how that looks. It maybe could get cleaned up a bit, but, you know, that's, to me, is pretty much environmentally friendly. There's no runoff coming off the... Directly coming off the land. Those plants, you know, help filter that.
I don't know.
Just hang on a second.
One row of boulders.
Just wait, let him make his comment.
Right, and it would be with the one row of boulders. And again, if I take a look at what he's got written here, that's not the recommendation we have. And Angie, didn't we have something about we're not gonna pursue things that are decorative opposed to things that are functional and environmentally sound? Did we have something, a change in the ordinance as well?
Angie?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, as the Planning Commission likely remembers, last year when we were working on our first step to implement our comprehensive plan, we had several meetings about this time last year related to shoreline alterations and projects in shoreline. So as Nick indicated, when he met with the applicants, likely discussed some of those changes. And the idea was that unless there's an existing erosion problem, that, you know, projects such as this would be seen differently than they might have under the prior ordinance. So yes, we did have... We do have new ordinances in place in 2021 than we did in 2020.
Okay. Now, if you wanna say something?
So originally, Larry's worked with another company on this approximately 10 years ago with-
Jenner 12.
And worked with the county to do... Be within the recommendations of the ordinance. Unfortunately, the project didn't turn out exactly how it was planned and became very overrun. Larry was looking at that time to be low maintenance, which is now why we're looking at it again. But it's quite evident that Larry and Betty are trying to be lake-friendly and do things the right way, working with the county here. If you look at the neighbors on both sides, they have quite extensive sand blankets, which is definitely not lake-friendly, I would say. We're doing everything we can here to, you know, restore what's there and then put landscaping and put plants back along the shoreline. I guess my question would be, is if this isn't going to be allowed, can we match what the neighbors are on both sides with the sand blanket?
And that's a good question. The answer is no. And how we got in that situation probably in the first place is we let somebody like you do something that Nick Newman told you on August 25th that you can't do, and that Greg Berg told you on October 7th that you can't do, and yet here we are. So then now, if we let you do what you wanna do, then two, three months from now, somebody's gonna say, can we do what Zins did? So which comes first, the chicken or the egg? It was very clearly pointed out to you that this is not allowed under the ordinance, and yet we are here. So I guess the commission will have to decide what they wanna do. So the answer to your question is no, you cannot do what they did because they did it at a different time when it was allowed, and now it's not allowed. They couldn't do that today. Members? Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, question for Nick. Under the recommended condition, we're looking at a 15... The recommendation is a 15-foot minimum depth native buffer established along the entire length of the wall. So that's 15 feet from where the boulders were being installed back into the yard.
That is correct, yep.
So we would conceivably gain native buffer restoration over what appears to be the proposal if we pass with the conditions.
Yep, Mr. Chairmember Wienerman, the 15 feet is more than what's there existing currently. And it is slightly more than what's proposed in a lot of the area across where the wall is. And then, as I noted in the staff report, that what's proposed isn't all native plants. We would like to see, you know, really all native plants. And additional plants could be decorative or something, but the goal is to try to establish natives as much as possible. And what's existing, there's a whole variety of existing native plants. There are goldenrod, milkweed, a bunch of others, so...
Other comments or questions? Seeing none, let's do the findings. Number one, is the proposal consistent with existing county ordinance performance standards? Specify the ethical section of the ordinance and discuss why or why not.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn. Excuse me, the proposal is not consistent with our ordinances and the new comprehensive plan goals and objectives. It does not adhere to our regulations or our recommendations, especially when it comes to that buffer.
Number two, are there any other standards, rules, requirements that the proposal must meet?
Mr. Chair, we do have the proposed conditions. And the first one, which is the 15-foot minimum depth native buffer, would actually be in excess of what's there already. So we... If we do approve this with the conditions as laid out, we might actually see an improvement of the landscape in terms of native buffer restoration.
And Nick, when they're saying boulders, the boulders are three to five feet in diameter?
The applicant indicated 24-to-36-inch diameter boulders for the wall.
And that's based on... Jason's comments are based on if it were to be recommended for approval. There's also a letter of credit that would have to be matched if it was recommended for approval. Three, is the proposed use compatible with the present and future land uses in the area? Can it be separated by distance or screening from adjacent land uses? Why or why not? How are any scenic views viewed from the water body or public place impacted by the proposed use?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, while it doesn't... The proposal doesn't meet our ordinance, it does... It is similar to the adjacent lands with having a similar kind of shoreline modification. So I don't believe it'd be a significant impact.
I can't remember seeing boulders on the neighboring properties, so I would say it's not consistent. And the scenic views from the lake, certainly the rock wall will be seen from the lakeside. Won't affect the scenic views, but it will be seen from the lake. Four, how are the potential environmental impacts, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protections, fish, wildlife habitat of the proposed being addressed? Under the proposal... I'm sorry, we didn't get these questions ahead of time, or maybe you're getting caught off-guard, guys, I'm not sure. But the proposal doesn't... There's no erosion or anything, so it doesn't... There are no issues of groundwater, surface water, air quality currently, and it wouldn't affect the fish and the wildlife, so... Five, how are the potential impacts of property affect property values in the area of which it's proposed? We did not receive any information on that. Six, how does the proposal affect the general health, safety, and welfare of the residents? It doesn't. Seven, does the proposal conform to the goals and objectives of county's comprehensive plan? Specify which goals and objectives. It does or does not. Just to keep it going, I'm gonna say nature goals. One, it does not conform, preserve, restore, protect important natural systems and natural resources. And underwater resources policies, it does not fit the... Adhere to adopted plans and regulations that maintain, restore, and enhance the county's water resources. If anybody's got any others, jump in. Eight, has the applicant provided financial assurance to guarantee reclamation or cleanup?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, that would be the second condition if we approve with the proposed conditions.
Other issues pertinent to the matter? I would refer again to the staff report that Mr. Newman advised them on August 25th. That it's not be an improvement, and that there's no erosion. And then the letter from Greg Berg on October 7th stating his concerns with the rock wall and disturbing the shoreline. Okay, with that, motion is in order. By the way, yeah, county board, remember we're recommending group. The county board will consider this at their November 30th meeting.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I want to make a motion that we recommend denying this application.
Motion's been made by Sean to recommend denial of the application.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that.
Rich Blankish seconds it. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to recommend denial of the county board, say aye.
Aye.
Sign. The only aye, nay I heard was Jason. Okay. Item number two, to consider a plat entitled Willow Prairie by Dwayne and Jane Saponiac, St. Joseph, St. Wendell Township, Heidi?
To consider a plat entitled Willow Prairie consisting of five residential lots. The plat was submitted by Dwayne and Jane Saponiac of St. Joseph, Minnesota, according to Stearns County Subdivision Ordinance Number 230 and Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439. The 54.28 acre plat is in part of the northeast quarter, northwest quarter, and in part of the northwest quarter, northeast quarter of Section 23, lying west of County Road 2 and 349th Street in St. Wendell Township. So this is a five-lot plat that's proposed. They have shown primary and alternate septic areas for each lot. All building entitlements are being used with this proposed plat. Setbacks are shown on the preliminary plat, there's adequate room to build on each lot. There will be a 25-foot wetland setback, structure setback to the wetlands within the plat. There are no feedlot setbacks that are impacted. Access is from County Road 2. They will be building up a new road, a new township road. For that, it will be a 66-foot right-of-way and meets the maximum cul-de-sac length limit of 1,320 feet. St. Wendell Township will be requiring the road be built to Township Road standards. Stormwater management, they did develop a stormwater plan. They are proposing lots 1 and 2, and the new road will be treated by a wet sedimentation basin. And lots 3, 4, and 5 will have individual filtration basins on each lot. Part of the property is within shoreline of a tributary to the Wattep River. Drainage and utility easements are shown along the right-of-way within the plat. Proposed conditions for the plat. Number one, a declaration of restriction will be required that will protect the two septic areas on each lot. Number two, a subdivision agreement requiring construction site best management practices during construction. Stake and roping off the soil treatment areas on each lot during ground disturbing activity. Soil borings conducted indicate groundwater table or evidence of redoxymorphic features within six feet of the natural ground surface. So the bottom floor elevation of a dwelling will be restricted. For wetlands, the wetland delineation was reviewed and approved, and that will be valid for five years from the date of the decision, which was November 10th of 2020. 25-foot structure setback from the wetlands is required. Wetlands shall be identified on the construction site plan and shall be protected with silt fence prior to ground disturbing activity. For stormwater, the developers hereby made aware that a national pollutant discharge elimination system construction stormwater permit shall be required. Construction of the filtration basins on lots 3, 4, and 5 are the responsibility of the property owner. They will be required to treat a certain number of amount of impervious surface. The engineered plan is required for that and shall be constructed in accordance with that plan. A financial guarantee will be required to be submitted with the construction site permit to guarantee that that's constructed properly. Basin areas shall be staked and roped off prior to ground disturbing activity. And then it shall be inspected by an engineer as being constructed in conformance with the plan. The plat of Willow Prairie is located in an agriculture area, and the construction, expansion, and operation of animal feedlots and other ag uses are permitted. Number three, a three-part agreement is required between the county, township, and developer addressing the road and stormwater construction and maintenance. Construction of the road and stormwater facilities on lots 1 and 2 shall be the responsibility of the developer. The construction of the road and stormwater facilities on lots 1 and 2 shall be inspected and approved by an engineer in an as-built drawing submitted, showing where installed in conformance with the approved plan. Long-term operation, maintenance, and clean-out schedule for the stormwater facilities on lots 1 and 2 to assure the continual effective removal of sediment shall be the responsibility of St. Wendell Township. Stormwater management on lots 3 through 5, Block 1, shall consist of individual filtration basins on each lot and shall be handled by the property owner as outlined in the subdivision agreement. Approval is required from St. Wendell Township that the road is constructed to Township Road standards prior to release of the letter of credit, cash, escrow, or bond. Number four, a water supply verification is required to be recorded with the final plat. Highway certificates required to be recorded with the final plat. An approved stormwater management plan is required prior to final plat approval. An irrevocable letter of credit, cash, escrow, or bond for 125% of the site grading and erosion sediment control costs for the stormwater facilities for the road, Lot 1 and Lot 2, is required to be submitted to Stearns County. An irrevocable letter of credit, cash, escrow, or bond for 125% of the costs for the installation, completion, and maintenance of the road as required in the road and stormwater management plan is required to be submitted to St. Wendell Township. Road shall be designed to meet St. Wendell Township standards, and a park dedication fee of $5,000 is required prior to final plat approval.
That's it?
That's it. No more.
Holy cow. Members, if you were there, if I say your name, say yes. If you were not there, say no. Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Ken Mossman? Mike Brell?
Yes.
I was there.
Yes.
Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky? Okay, and then staff did their site reviews, Heidi and, was it Jean? Jennifer?
Jennifer.
The applicant, Sam Dwayne, you want to state your name, addresses for the record, please? The green button, yep.
Dwayne Saponiac, 35002, 95th Avenue, St. Joe, Minnesota, 56374.
Sam DeLeo, Craman Lee's DeLeo Land Surveying, I'm the project surveyor. My address is 13 11th Avenue North, St. Cloud, Minnesota.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything to the staff report?
I would like clarification on a couple items. Since we're here, on staff analysis, item 3, 3A and 3B, you say the construction of the road and storm sewer facilities on lots 1 and 2 for both A and B, but there is no road. Wouldn't it just be stormwater facilities?
Oh, right, yeah, yep.
And then items, I guess items 7 and 8 talk about the letter of credit. So there's going to be a letter of credit for the site grading, erosion sediment control costs for the stormwater facilities, which I understand. But then we're doing a separate one for the site grading for the township. Would the site grading, I mean, that just basically everything involved with road construction, including gravel and paving, is that what we're looking at separating? Where do we separate that?
Right, yeah, I believe the road construction, well, that financial guarantee would go through St. Wendell Township. And the stormwater construction goes, that financial guarantee would go towards the county.
Okay, and we're fine with that, I just want to clarify. Okay.
Sure.
Mr. Chair?
Angie?
Angie Berg, just to clarify, Sam and Mr. Saponiac. So the three-part agreement will ensure that the township and the county aren't holding the same money. And it does get a bit tricky, right, because some of your mass grading ends up getting stormwater and road. So we'll just need to work with you and your engineer to get the working materials list. But the whole goal is so we aren't holding money for the same thing.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify. Thank you.
And do we have the standards, either Sam or Heidi, from the township on the road? Because I don't think we had them at the plating committee yet. Do we have those standards? Do you know what those standards are?
Not all of them, no. We have some, and we're still working out the exact dimensions of the cul-de-sac diameters itself. And we're going to the next board meeting to talk about that. But we'll come up to an agreement. I mean, they ultimately have to approve the roadway, and we're going to build it to how they want it. We just want to know exactly how it has to be before we put it on paper.
Correct, that's why I asked.
Thank you.
And you do know how long the cul-de-sac is, right?
It is less than 1,320 feet.
For the record, I just want to make sure that. Okay, we're going to open a public hearing. If anybody's here or on Zoom that wants to say something about this item, Jen, item two, please either come up to the podium or somehow let us know you're on Zoom. Supervisor Stick is here. State your name and address for the record, Carl.
I'm Chief, County Supervisor and Road Maintenance Man. One question I got is why is the length of this road limited to half of the distance that it should be? You've got a limit, the county says you can only go so far on a, this is what you had told me. Why, I don't know why. If it's going to be a township road, I think we should have the jurisdiction over how long it goes and everything.
Heidi?
Mr. Chair, ordinance number 2, Stearns County Ordinance Number 230, limits the length to 1,320 feet for a cul-de-sac, for a new cul-de-sac that's being constructed. So that's what was approved in ordinance for the length of the road.
And the reason for that was, was that emergency vehicles and things like that, or remind me what that was?
Mr. Chair?
Angie?
Angie Berg, Environmental Services. And I think you were on our planning commission the first time that we dealt with some of those standards. And it's for fire, it's for life and safety reasons. And so that is why there's the limit. And at this point in the game, typically townships have already signed the preliminary plat, so we wouldn't have suspected that there was concern. But the length originally was for life safety. I think way back when, the length of a fire hose was, you know, limited to a certain length, and that's the origination of the standard.
That's what I vaguely remembered, Carl. And then, you know, vehicles going in and coming out, if it's a dead end, if there's a tornado, storm, fire, whatever, I thought that was the logic behind it, but.
We must have a dozen, about three miles long with cul-de-sacs, I don't have no problem. And dragging hoses, you ain't be dragging hoses. We fire trucks that we've got, or Stevens and St. Joe, they carry your water, and they got the tank right off of the tanker. They don't drag no hoses from the county road. There's no water hoses, there's no water pipes around there to hook onto. They bring the water. That's got nothing to do, I just don't understand this, the way they gotta put the roads in for the driveways to get on there. Three is the limit that we'd like to have going off of a cul-de-sac. So if you link the cul-de-sac, two of those lots can possibly be coming onto the regular road before you get to the cul-de-sac. This way here, you've got a mess. Did any of you guys go out on County Road 2 and 4 down the roadways? Who on earth designed that? I mean, they got, this is what, they got the road dead long, then you got a drawn driveway coming off of here, you got another long driveway going way into back there, and another one over here. And then when you put the signs up for 911, you've got to put three of them up on the road, and you've got to put one of them up by each driveway up there so they know where to go. I mean, it's just a mess. The road should be extended to where there are no more than three driveways off of that, and then the rest should be able to come right onto the road. I don't know, I think you'd probably be for something like that instead of these long driveways. Who's going to plow them? They think we're paying taxes, and they want us to plow them. And we don't go off of public roads without our snow plow. But that's one of the reasons here. And did I understand you saying 50 some foot right-of-way? We require 66 foot. Oh, I understood it, 52 feet, 66 foot right-of-way. But that's my concern, I don't understand this, that the length should be put there for the use. It's got nothing to do with fire or emergency. Man, we've got some of them that's about 10 times worse than that. But for the ways open, I was out there and inspected it. The road should be put in according to how the lots, so they, only three driveways. Otherwise, you're plowing, when you plow that circle, you've got no place to put the snow if you've got five driveways coming off of a circle. You're plowing, you've got nothing in between.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Anybody else here from the public or on Zoom on this item? Anybody else here or on Zoom? If not, motion be ordered.
Mr. Chair, the final, this is the preliminary plat that is shown.
Preliminary plat.
And Mr. Chair, I do have one letter to read into the record too yet.
Do that now, please.
All right, my name is Tony Leeser. I own property on the south side of this proposed development. I was not aware that this had been approved for Residential 10 already. I bought my property in 2019, knowing that this was Ag 40 and that I would not have neighbors to the north of me. I wish I wouldn't, I would have known about the meeting to approve the switch from Ag 40 to Residential 10. That being said, I'm strongly against this whole development. I would hope that if they approve the plat, that they require people to build as far away from my property line as possible, or they require an adult tree line be planted on the property line. I personally can't sense, since I have an existing pasture fence on the property line. I don't see the need for another development of houses since there is miles of land closer to St. Cloud, St. Joseph, and Sartell that have developments going up currently. This area was an Ag 40 area for the reason of keeping this an Ag area. Thanks, Tony Leeser.
Okay. Nobody else here, nobody on Zoom, motion be in order?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I move we close the public hearing.
Motion's made, close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Ken Mossman seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor closing public hearings, say aye. Pose same sign, public hearing is closed. Discussion among members.
Mr. Chair, question for staff. On the staff report that talks about the building site, it says that if they go below the redoxymorphic features, they could put in an alternate insulation engineered groundwater drainage system. Is there any requirement for where that groundwater drainage system would drain? I mean, they could be pumping a lot of water out of a groundwater system. Where would that go?
Mr. Chair, typically, we don't know where that drains to. It just, we receive a engineered plan that shows how that drains. It just, we receive a engineered plan that shows how that drain system would be installed around the foundation of the home.
And the director would be the ESD director?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, um, should we do the findings? Number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not? It is consistent with the zoning ordinance and the planning conditions. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county listed applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman. Um, I believe it is. Under, uh, living goals, it's collaborating with cities and townships to maintain sustainable growth patterns. So this has been discussed with the planning commission and St. Wendell Township. And also supporting housing options that give people the opportunity to have viable, safe, stable, and affordable homes.
Three, is the proposal compatible with existing neighborhood? It's in St. Wendell Township, so it's just about compatible with anything, so it is. Four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied? Only by the, um, two hundred and seventy-five conditions? Kidding.
Roughly five hundred.
It might be a little, uh, but, uh, through all the, um, comments and success, it conditions is how they would be met. Five, other issues pertinent to the matter. Township city input, yes, we received that approval and comments. Federal, state, local permits, they're local permits. Environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water quality, wellhead protection, it's addressed by the conditions. Information submitted regarding impact property values, there has not been any. Public health, safety, traffic generation, it's been discussed and identified. Public service facilities, including schools, parks, streets, utilities, again, it's been addressed. Financial assurances required to guarantee reclamation or cleanup, not reclamation or cleanup, but the roads and the other items that have been discussed. Is there any other issue that we should identify? If not, motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, um, I move that we recommend approval of the Willow Prairie preliminary plat to the county board of commissioners at their next, for consideration at their next meeting.
Can you say that three times faster?
Not at all.
Okay, you did that pretty good.
I will second that.
Okay, motion by Jason, second by Ken, recommend approval, county board. This one will not be on November thirtieth. This will be done when the conditions are met. And so that is to be determined once everything's met. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The recommendation is made to the county board. Good luck. Item number three.
Just like the comment, I, I want to, uh, just validate some of the comments, uh, by Supervisor Stick. You know, the, the shortness of that thirteen hundred feet, he is, he is correct that we have many other township roads that are in violation to that, and we have even expanded, uh, development along those roads. In particular, like the Hanover property, I think it was, we, we had just recently done that, and that, I believe that road might even be a mile long dead end. But, but when we look at the ordinance, uh, perhaps there's something we could do as far as perhaps widening the road and then making it actually extend beyond thirteen hundred feet. So just, 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 just to say there's some validity in his arguments.
Yeah, thank you. Item number three, uh, consider a request for a conditional use permit. Nolan and Tricia Zackman, Belgrade. Heidi, the staff report?
To consider a request for a conditional use permit submitted by Nolan and Tricia Zackman, Belgrade, Minnesota, according to sections four point eight, six point fifty-one, and nine point three point five T of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance number four thirty-nine, to operate a rural tourism business in the Agriculture Forty zoning district. Property under consideration is Lot One, Block One, Minoma Estates Two, located in part of the northeast quarter, northwest quarter, lying south of County Road Thirty-two in section eleven, Crow River Township. The applicants own twelve point nine two acres, and this rural tourism business would include two rental units for overnight lodging and provide on-farm experiences for families and schools, including classes and field trips. Part of the property is within the Shoreland Overlay District of the North Fork of the Crow River. The existing access will be used and is from County Road Thirty-two. There's wetland on the property, but that will not be impacted with the proposal. The rural tourism business will use an existing barn on the property. That will include the two rental units and a future learning area. A new septic system will be installed for the rental units. The accessibility code is required to be met. They show eight parking spaces on site. They are not proposing any additional screening. The closest residential dwelling that is not on the property is approximately twenty-two hundred feet away to the north. All the proposed construction and remodeling are in the interior of the existing barn. No signs proposed, no change to lighting. Hours of operation, education classes are proposed between eight AM and six PM Monday through Thursday, and the rental units would be available year round. Staff is recommending hours of operation to be from eight AM to eight PM Monday through Sunday. They will not be, or no food and beverages will be served as part of the rural tourism business, and they will need to get a lodging license. Proposed conditions, uh, number one, the accessibility, uh, code will need to be met. The applicant will need to obtain a lodging license from Environmental Services prior to renting the units. The farm learning area shall be renovated within five years. A sewage treatment system shall be permitted and installed for the rental units prior to the lodging license being issued. Hours of operation for the farm learning area shall be eight AM to eight PM Monday through Sunday. And that's all that I have.
I note that they say there's not going to be signage, but just in case there would be one day, maybe just share what that limitation is, because I've seen people get in trouble with that, not knowing.
Right. Um, yeah, I'd have to look up.
Or you don't have to do it this second, but maybe just share it with them. If you ever do signage, check with them first, because again, people innocently have put up a sign, and then they've gotten in trouble over it, so. Members, if you visit the, the site, say yes when I say your name. Rich Blunkish?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Pearl?
Yes.
I did?
Yes.
Jason Wienerman did. Sean?
Yes.
Angie, Commissioner Persky, okay? I'm going to go on the edge and allege and say that you're Tricia, so state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello? Oh, okay. Um, yeah, hi, uh, my name's Tricia Zackman, and, um, address, you said, right?
Please.
Three eight nine seven five, County Road Thirty-two, Belgrade, Minnesota, five six three one two.
Do you want to introduce your child too?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's Esther.
Because she's on the record, so we may as well identify her.
Yeah.
Do you want to add anything to the, um, staff report?
Uh, nope, I don't think so.
Okay. We're going to open up the public hearing. Anybody here on this item, item number three? Anybody here or on Zoom that would like to share comments? Anybody here or on Zoom? I think a motion's in order.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I move we close the public hearing.
Sean moves, close the public hearing. Rich is going to second it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, public hearing is closed. Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, a question for both staff and the applicant. So item number N says an eating and drinking establishment shall be licensed by the county and meet the provisions of the Stearns County ordinance. As you're looking at a farm discovery kind of experiential business, you may not be thinking of it now, but if in the future they decide to, um, feed people the products that are produced on the farm, and they obtain a license, do they, do we need to modify, would they need to come back and say we've modified our proposal?
Mr. Chair?
Angie.
Uh, Jason, which item were you looking at on the conditions?
Item number, it's not a condition, it's under, um.
Performance standards N.
Okay, got it.
And, and I would assume, uh, not to get ahead of you, but I would assume that's sale of food product. If you want to invite people over and, you know, hospitality, feed them, then that doesn't, it's only if you're selling food, right?
I, I'll, I can touch on that a little bit, Mr. Chair. So the, the intent of that performance standard is that if there's going to be eating and drinking establishment, that it is licensed. And so what we could do, if there's ever that potential, is on the public record tonight, indicate that if that would come down the road as a, as a proposal, that they would not have to come back. Because they're not necessarily asking for it, but we wouldn't want them to have to come back just to amend for that reason. And sometimes establishments are licensed by Department of Ag. It depends on the, the sales, the amount of sales per year. Some are licensed by us, some are Department of Ag. So, yes, that's a good point, and I, Commissioner Persky's going to bring up a similar point on something else. So if you want to leave that open for no future amendment, then by way of stating it on the record, that they would not have to come back for an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
And again, Angie, it would be the sale of food, correct?
Um, Mr. Chair, do you mean that if they just provided their own on-farm?
If they gave a child a candy bar, they're not going to get held in Stearns County jail, are they?
Correct. However, I do think there is also a limit on what Department of Ag licenses. So even if it's, um, I think Tricia would call us and say, hey, what do we need to do if we're going to, you know, do this thing? And we could help her understand that.
And I think, again, Jason does bring up a good point. As I did with the sign, we're just helping you because this is new. I think it's a great idea, uh, but I can see you one day wanting to put up a sign so they know where you are. I can see one day that you're going to maybe want to feed them something or sell the farm product or, so rather than put you in the box, we want you to succeed, so I think that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, um, absolutely. I definitely agree with that. I do think that, um, maybe not like having fresh food, but, um, you know, we do have pigs. So selling maybe, uh, frozen packaged product would be definitely the first step in what we'd want to definitely sell to the, whoever comes to our farm, you know, to see the whole production and then have that option to buy from, right from the farm, so. So, yeah, I would love both of that to be open for me.
If one of the kids wanted to pet the pig, do they need a license for that, or can they do that? I'm G, I'm joking. Commissioner Persky, Angie warned me you were going to say something.
Yes, I, I was just concerned just a little bit about hours of operation and the necessity for them. And, and where this might actually go. Are we going to be looking at the potential for having scout groups out there and school groups out there if, if that's going to happen? So, for example, if you would have a hayride and a campfire, you know, that could extend beyond eight o'clock. Uh, also, let's say you wanted to do, if you've been out in western Stearns County and you're on a, out there on a clear night, the, the stars are exceptional. I mean, the Milky Way can just come, come out and, and look at you, and it's, it's impressive even through a pair of binoculars. You, the, the multitude of stars that you can then see, that's very impressive for a school group. So would you maybe want to allow them to do that? Maybe you've got a comet that's coming on the horizon at two AM, so you bring a school group out there and they want to look at that comet. Again, there, there's some possibilities of things that could happen there. I just would like to maybe see, does, does that hour of operation really need to be defined in that what's the harm of keeping it open-ended? I, I'm just looking at that, what the potential for that would be.
Tomorrow morning, you'd want to be up at two o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the eclipse or whatever it's called, not the eclipse.
Burialis, yeah.
Again, another point, uh, I'm sure you didn't suggest eight to eight, I'm sure that came from staff probably. So is there a way to leave that open? Again, we're in Crow River Township, so I don't think this is a huge deal, and it probably came from staff and not from them.
Right, Mr. Chair, there was, um, potential hours were listed in the application, and staff expanded them to eight to eight Monday through Sunday. But, yeah, it's up to you guys if you want to just take off that condition altogether, um, or expand it further. That's up to your discretion.
Mr. Chair, to, to flesh out that question a little more, we have the, we've had other areas that have special event exemptions. How does that work? Would that be an option here to allow them to get a special event exception with notification or?
Well, the ordinance allows special events. Um, there's a limit to the number of special events you can have in a year, and you just register with the county if that's, I think it's fifteen special events, um, or fifteen days out of the year. That potentially, I think, could be an option if she wanted to do one special event that was outside of the scope of this permit. It would still be registering with us a provisional use for that event.
Mr. Chair, I think according to what Joe is saying, so you got some people there and they're inside and all the ones. You've got the stars are shining some night exceptionally. Well, you can tell them, well, come out and look at this, you can see this, you're not going to have time to call for a permit to do it. Just, uh, open it up so you can do it. Or the pack cattle get out in the middle of the night and you say, hey, you want a teachable moment? Come and help chase my livestock back.
Exactly, that's perfect.
We're picking rocks in the spring.
Yeah, hey, it's an experience for everyone, so.
Jason brings up a point, but I just think that would complicate a little bit. I think we just eliminate it. Again, if you're, if there's going to be problems, it's going to get reported, and then we'll have to react to it. But I just don't see that happening in Crow River Township.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, is there any ordinance within the township as far as Ag is concerned? Just curious, you know, as far as hours of operation. I mean, you can run a, a grinder or a loader or a, uh, any, any type of ag equipment twenty-four seven, can you not?
Yep.
As far as I know, yeah.
Farm country, yes.
Okay.
So I, I would suggest that we eliminate that condition to give you flexibility. But I guess let's, is there a consensus on that, or heads are nodding?
Yeah, let's do that.
And I don't think they're sleeping, so we're in good shape. So we'll eliminate, um, item number M under the four, the performance standards. Okay? Any other discussion? If not, we'll do the findings. Anything you want to wrap up, Ms. Zackman?
Um, I don't, I don't think so. I guess I just had one thing come to mind. There's still a lot that I don't really have figured out, but, um, there's so many different, different avenues to go down. But maybe bringing it back to the food side of things. Having almost like a dinner on the farm of food that comes right from the farm, that would maybe be a possibility in the future. So, um, definitely not right away, but that would be definitely something that I'd kind of want to put in a plan, in, in a couple of year plan. So I would like to make sure that that's on the record of some sort.
And staff can help you identify then if it's the Department of Ag or if it's you guys, you know, give her some information that. Have you ever visited a working farm in Wisconsin? They're huge in Wisconsin. It's called a working farm.
Like a dairy farm or?
Any kind of farm, but you literally move into the farm. I've wanted to do it for years and I just never did. But you literally move into the, like, you stay in the farmhouse overnight, and then if you happen to be combining oats at that time of year, that's what you do. And it was really. And it was really big with doctors and lawyers, the people that had money, they wanted to show the kids how they grew up, and picking rocks, and they're all over Wisconsin.
Oh, wow, I didn't know that.
Yep, and you literally eat breakfast with the farm family, lunch, supper, and then you do the work that's being done at that time of the year on the farm.
Well, there you go, that's cool. I might need some recommendations from you.
Do, check the Wisconsin, I always marvel why we don't have them.
Yeah.
Because, again, a lot of people grew up on the farm, and now have no, the kids have no idea what a farm life is, so you, I think you want to be flexible in some of that stuff, and.
Chair, I can tell you why, why we don't have them here. We had discussed it at one time. The county and the whole world gets too involved in all their ordinances, that by the time you're done, it's just a big headache.
Well, I can see that.
You know, if you've got livestock and things like that, there are too many liabilities.
Yeah, that's, that's very true, so finding the right insurance, too, is that task itself, I guess, so.
Just make sure if you have visitors and you happen to be butchering a hog, make sure that they know what you're going to do before you do it.
Right.
Otherwise, you might freak them out.
Yep.
Okay, findings of fact, then. Somehow, you can work with her on the food stuff, then, give her what they would need. Findings of fact, number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chair? Aye. Yes, it isn't, it is consistent with zoning ordinance 439, sections 4.8, 6.51, and 9.3.5T.
Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, it does conform with the business comprehensive plan goals and objectives in rural business policies. Section, numbers one and two, rural businesses and ag areas are utilized as existing infrastructure and to build character in the neighborhood.
Three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, the existing neighborhoods are primarily agriculturally driven business areas, so yes, it is.
Four, how has the applicant demonstrated the standards criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, we have the conditions, and the applicant who has come before us has expressed an extreme willingness to reach out for help and assistance as she moves forward on this.
I'm just looking on page three, hours of operation, we'll have to eliminate number five as well, then, just for the record, make sure that we do that. I said number four, correct? Or is that, no, I, number four, how's the applicant? Yeah, I did do number four. Number five, other issues pertinent to the matter, township city input, I don't believe we received any. Federal, state, local permits, none, except for the food, yeah, the food part. Environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, not applicable. Information submitted, property values, no. Public health, safety, traffic generation, really not an issue. Public service, facilities, schools, parks, streets, utilities, really not an issue. Financial assurance required, not applicable. Other, it's probably, is this the first one we've ever done?
Yeah, it is.
So, that would be, that would be relevant, it's the first, whatever you call it, that we're, that we're doing.
And, Mr. Chair, also, as per Angie's direction regarding the eating and drinking establishment, can we waive the requirement they need to come back before us? If they, okay, so, in the minutes for that one. Thanks.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, they do have to come before?
No, they do not.
No, they do not, right, you'll just work with them. Commissioner Persky.
Was there a mention of, was there two potential lodging places? Were we looking at places to stay overnight?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And, of course, those would have to be brought up to appropriate standards? I don't know.
Correct, yep.
Yep, that's part of the standards, and the handicapped accessibility and all that, yep.
Yep.
Okay, so a motion would be in order? This would be at the November 30th county board meeting, we'll recommend whatever we recommend to the county board on November 30th.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the applicant's request.
Okay.
I'll second it.
With the conditions, Rich moves, and Mike seconds to recommend approval to the county board with conditions. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. The recommendation is granted, good luck. Item number four, consider a conditional use permit, Rick and Brenda Schmidt, South Haven. I understand the Schmitts are with us?
Ah, yeah, the Schmitts are online, yeah.
Oh, they're online? I thought somebody said they were in the room. Again, before I forget, agenda, item number seven, if you happen to step in the room after the meeting was started, is tabled, so we are not going to be considering item number seven, so. Okay, Heidi, the staff report?
To consider a conditional use permit application submitted by Rick and Brenda Schmidt, South Haven, Minnesota, according to sections 4.8 and 10.1.8 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance number 439, to use an alternative elevation method to elevate an existing structure in the floodplain overlay district. The proposed project is located on Lot 17 Coz Augusta Shores, lying southeast of Arrowwood Road in section 11 Fairhaven Township. So, applicants are wanting to elevate their structure to meet the regulatory flood protection elevation, which is 998.45 for Augusta Lake. Property is owned residential one, access is from Arrowwood Road, no new access is proposed. The property did get a variance in March of 2021 to add a second story to the existing residential dwelling, and that was due to it not meeting the property line setback or the septic system setbacks. Once they began working on that, it was discovered that the whole structure needed to be replaced, so they are also applying for a variance to replace the whole structure instead of just adding a second story, and that is on the Board of Adjustment Agenda for December 9th. The septic system is certified. The DNR is still reviewing the plans, we did get comments from them late yesterday. They do need a little bit more information before they can confirm that the plans meet the requirements, so that information has been given to the applicant, and we're proposing that that just be approved by the DNR prior to issuing the actual construction site permit. Let's see, so proposed conditions, the as-built condition of the structure shall be certified by the engineer as being in compliance with the plans. Construction site best management practices are required during construction, and elevation certification is required, form is required showing the bottom floor of the cabin meets the regulatory flood protection elevation of 998.45. Prior to issuing the construction site permit, an engineer's certification is required for the design. The statement must identify the building with the installed engineered openings and include the design professional's name, title, address, type of license, state of issuance, of issuing the license and signature. A statement certifying the design of the openings will automatically equalize the hydrostatic flood loads. A description of the range of flood characteristics tested or computed for which the certification is valid. At this site, the RFP E is 998.45. To ensure that the enclosed area below the RFP E continues to meet ordinance requirements, the following shall apply. Enclosed areas below the RFP E shall be used solely for parking of vehicles, limited storage, or access to the building. The wall of the enclosed areas below the RFP E shall be equipped and remain equipped with openings as shown on the permit. Stearns County may take appropriate legal action to correct any violation. A duly appointed representative of the county is authorized to enter the property for the purpose of inspecting the exterior and interior of the enclosed area to verify compliance with the permit. Obtain a variance from the Stearns County Board of Adjustment to replace the residential dwelling, and prior to issuing the construction site permit, the DNR shall approve the engineered plans. And that's all that I have.
Thank you, Heidi. Members, if you've visited the site, when I call your name, say yes, if you did not, say no. Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
I was there. Jason?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky, okay, we all visited the site. Applicant introductions, the Schmitts are online with us. Can you hear us?
Mr. Chair, Angie Berg, I'm getting a note from Mr. Schmidt in the chat box that he is not able to hear, but if it's okay with the planning commission, I would proceed with your, with your meeting unless there's any specific questions for Mr. Schmidt's. This is a pretty standard application, and I, in the meantime, Deb's trying to get him on, but I would, I would think he would want us to proceed with, with discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Ken?
Is this a request to do it, or an after the fact? We were out there, we all saw, looks like the floor is there already. Can they, can they lift it up, or do whatever, still move it at this point, or?
Mr. Chair, I can touch on that a little bit. So, with the, with the variance was granted, and they, as Heidi indicated, started to get into the structure and realized the whole thing had to come down because it wasn't, the walls were rotting. So, in theory, I guess the Board of Adjustment could look at it as after the fact, but he has stopped construction, and so is the CUP would not be considered after the fact because what you, and I haven't been out there lately, but.
Chat, and then do what?
Likely what you, what you see is the slab, and that might be part of the stem wall, that might be part of the, no?
Don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then you can consider it as you, as you wish. They are cooperating with us?
So, dial this right in, my enter, enter in the chat first?
Let's right now?
I'll dial in my phone, okay. Dial the number, and then.
He can't hear us, but we can hear him.
We can hear him, yes. He was on the phone.
So, Mr. Schmidt, can you hear us?
Okay, so hang tight.
Yeah, hang tight, he'll be on in a sec.
Okay, well, we can continue the discussion, I guess, in the, in the meantime, so Ken's point is taken.
Welcome to WebEx. Enter your access code or meeting number.
Any other questions or thoughts at this point? Commissioner Persky?
Angie, when I were at the site, too, it just said the height of the building stuck out to me, and is there any restriction on height, obviously, was that looked at?
Angie, you're hiding.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, it's 30-foot height, and that would be something that is going to be met. The, I don't, I can pull up the building plans and try to zoom in on them, we have them. It looks like it's at 29, too, from what I can tell.
Okay. Most of the foundations we've done like this is, the thought occurred to me, obviously, they were single-story, the ones that I remember approving. I assume that's been engineered to support the additional height and weight, I would assume. Mr. Schmidt, are you on, can you hear us?
Can anybody hear me?
Mr. Schmidt, can you hear us? Mr. Schmidt?
Hello?
Okay, let's keep going. So, the public hearing, let's open the public hearing, anybody here? Obviously, they won't be able to get it with us online. Is there anybody here that wants to address this issue? Agenda number four. Anybody here? Nobody's here. Mr. Schmidt's not there. So, we're going to keep moving. Nobody's here.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn.
No correspondence?
Correct.
Okay, Sean?
I move we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Sean.
I'll second it.
Ken, Mike, seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor closing public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chair, one other question. Impervious, was that looked at, or because it's an old flat and following the same, it seemed between the driveway, which is a lot of concrete, the garage, and the cabin, there was a considerable amount of impervious, it just eyeballing, it appeared to be over 25%.
Heidi?
Mr. Chair, they do have a survey that shows it's at 25.2% impervious. I believe as part of the variance, they were needing to remove a certain amount in order to come into compliance with that. So, before any construction site permits are issued, that we'll make sure that that's met.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt, we can see you, can you hear us? Okay, that's it, I'm giving up. So, let's do the findings. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here, it is consistent with the land use and zoning ordinance number 439, sections 4.8 and 10.1.8.
Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman again. Under the lake shore living policies, it creates riparian standards that balance interests of residents while protecting the resources, and we're evaluating lake shore projects, observing sightlines.
Yeah, that's.
Maintaining flood protection.
You can hear me on here.
Okay. You said that just like a public service announcement, Jason, that really sounded nice.
And that was brought to you by the Ad Council.
Three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood, why or not?
Mr. Chair, I would say it is, because it's on a lake, and they're all kind of, everything's kind of the same there, so it is compatible.
Now, I'm on mute.
How has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, the six recommended conditions by the staff, plus pending action by the Board of Adjustment.
Plus, I guess, we'd have to add, the DNR will have to have their permit put in, or determine whenever they get done with it, too, so.
Okay. Number five, other issues pertinent, township, city, well, obviously township input, I don't think there was any.
No.
State, federal, local permits, the local permits and the DNR permits. Environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead, they've been Information submitted regarding impact property values, we received nothing. Public health, safety, traffic generation impacts, not applicable. Public service, facilities, schools, parks, streets, utilities, really not applicable. Financial standards required? I don't believe so. And others, I think Ken, this is where you can make your point, other issues pertinent after the fact.
It's been started already, or it's at a point where, I guess, we didn't, don't know how far along it is, but it is started.
So, the after the fact, and then that the Board of Adjustment action is pending, would be pertinent, I think.
Mr. Chair, and is the impervious mentioned in, in it? Otherwise, I would mention it here, that impervious standards must be met?
I don't think it would hurt to mention it again.
Because I also see the addition of the deck is on there as well, and I just want to make sure, you know, that would also have to be subtracted from the amount of impervious.
Okay.
Will that be condition seven?
Well, it's a, it's a, other issues pertinent.
Other issues.
Yeah, so it would be a third issue pertinent to the application.
Most of these will probably come up in the Board of Adjustments variance things.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, with that, motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve it with all of the conditions there are, six conditions.
Okay.
Jason Wienerman seconded.
Mike recommends, moves to recommend approval to the county board, Jason Wienerman seconded it. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair?
Heidi?
Can I clarify that that would be seven? Can I clarify that that would be seven conditions with the addition of the DNR approval being needed?
Seven conditions, yes. They're both saying yes. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion to recommend approval, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion is granted. Item number five, interim use permit request for Matthew and Christina Barrett.
Close, Barrett.
Barrett?
Yep.
I'm German, I'm sorry.
Are we?
I say it with a long A. Heidi, staff report?
To consider an interim use permit request submitted by Matthew and Christina Barrett, Cold Spring, Minnesota. According to Sections 4.18, 6.62, and 9.9.6, A of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance number 439. The request is to operate a vacation home rental in the residential one zoning district. The proposal is located on Lot 3, Block 1, the Singing Hills Platteau Line, south of Florence Circle and Forest Hill Road in Section 25 Munson Township. The applicant is requesting the permit for the vacation home rental to be valid for 20 years. Property is owned residential one. The home meets all required setbacks and the property is in compliance with lot coverage. There's no feedlot or wetland concerns. It's within shoreline of Cedar Island Lake, which is a recreational development lake. The adjacent properties are all small residential lake shore lots and are all zoned residential one. There are over 125 residential dwellings within a half mile of the property. For the performance standards, the water test for nitrates and bacteria has been submitted. The septic system has been certified. This is a five-bedroom home and the occupancy will be limited to 11 people. There's adequate room for off-street parking. The septic was certified in August of 2021 and is sized for a five-bedroom home. Screening or fencing has been proposed. A license, a lodging license will be required from the department prior to renting out the home. Environmental health staff have been to the property and owner is aware of the requirements to get that lodging license. Proposed conditions, the Planning Commission set a date or event upon which the IUP would expire. Again, the applicant is requesting 20 years. The maximum occupancy of the vacation home rental shall be 11 people. The applicant shall obtain a lodging license from Environmental Services prior to renting the home. The licensee shall keep a report detailing use of the home by recording at a minimum the name, address, phone number, and vehicle license number of all guests using the property. Copy of the report shall be provided to the department upon request. And number five, a ring buoy attached to a 3/16 inch manila rope or equivalent material not over 60 feet in length is required near the shore as life-saving equipment. And that is all that I have.
Kate? Thank you. Members, if you've visited the site, say yes when I call your name. If you have not, say no. Rich Blenkish?
Yes.
Mike? I'm sorry, Ken?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I was there. Jason?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky? Yes. Kate? Applicant introductions, I assume you're Matthew?
I'm Matthew Barrett. I live on 110 15th Avenue South, Cold Spring, 56320.
Anything you want to add to Heidi's staff report?
Just, I've been in customer service for about 10 years, or executive customer service for about 10 years now. And just, we plan on doing a really good job in keeping it like a neighborhood. I would say that there's some natural screening there already, you know, that would block from the overall neighbors. It's a big lot. Yeah, it's part of my retirement plan, which is why the 20 years is on there. We're looking to use it as a family vacation rental part of the year as well as, you know, as an investment property as well.
We have a number of letters, emails that we'll get to at some point. First, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody here in this item, please come up to the podium. And if there's more than one person, please come sit up in the front rows so that we can keep this rolling. Limit your comments to two to three minutes. Please try not to be duplicative in your comments. State your name and record, name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Salo. I live at 21687 Forest Hill Road in Richmond. And I have a little, may I share this with you?
Sure.
Okay.
You can give it to Heidi.
Heidi, thank you. My husband and I live directly next to the property. We share, as you'll see, a border with them. Our big concern is noise. When you see the picture, you'll see that the fire pit that they've put outside in the front yard is about 100 feet from our bedroom windows. There is an amber maple hedge that is on our side of the property. But believe me, from years past and our past neighbor's daughter, it doesn't block any noise. Anyone in the driveway with the car on, radio talking loudly outside there, you hear in our house. We're very concerned about noise. So looking at the statutes, it says we can request a noise limitation, quiet hours, and possibly building a barrier of some kind for the noise.
Kate?
So, that was my, our concerns. We're also a little concerned about the 20 years. Speaking with some of our neighbors, I find, thinking that we were hearing, understanding that three years was common, but I'm hearing that more longer is common. So I'm incorrect in that statement. But 20 years seemed kind of like a long time if this doesn't work out well.
We've done a variety of things depending on where the property was, 3, 5, 10, 15, 20, but your points, well taken.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next? Anyone else? Yep. And then the written comments will be entered into the record in the map.
Hi, my name is Sandy Wisler. We have a place at the end of Florence Circle, so it's eight, 10 properties away. So just the fact that it's a residential area, it's all pretty clear that it is a residential area. And I was looking through the 20, 30 comprehensive plan and the like 4.8.2 criteria for considering additional use permits. The conditional use permits, the intermittent use, or whatever this thing is called, is supposed to fall underneath that. And it's that, that it should be compatible with the existing neighborhood. So it's a residential neighborhood. The 2040 plan also says, the one thing that I just picked up tonight for the Lake Shore Living Policies, number eight, said the project maintains the neighborhood residential character, da, 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 da. So just that it's residential. But my bigger focus is the 20 years. I would just implore this commission to, or what, I'm sorry, I forget what you call, committee?
Commission.
To follow what was already done in 2021 and do a three-year interim use permit versus a 20-year. I mean, I Googled iPhone came out in 2007, and that was 14 years ago. And if you think of how long, I mean, 20 years is an incredibly long time. And I would just implore the commission to do what's already been established in 2021, to do a three-year. If you decide to grant the interim use permit, to just do it as what's already been done this year for 2021 and do it for three years.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I did not get her address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our mailing address is different than our Florence Hill address, but 19491 Florence Hill Circle in Richmond. Is that?
That's good.
19411?
19491.
911, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Next?
I'm Clyde Terway, 21417 Forest Hill Road, Richmond. I've got a question on this particular sheet. Is this all the vacation rentals in the whole county?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just seeing that there's two applications tonight. Everybody's within a mile of my house. And we've got one across the road. And I noticed that of the 33 properties here, 11 are on the Channel Lakes, close to us. This would be two more, that gets you up to about 39% of the whole county verbo. So is this the intention of the Planning Commission to allow this? And my question would be, is there going to be a limit to how many of these are? Could a developer come in and just buy house after house after house and turn it into a vocational rental? I'd like, you know, I'd just like you to consider that in your process here. We do not consider vacation rentals to be good for the neighborhood because they're not the same as having a neighbor. It's basically transient. People come, people go. You don't know who's going to be there when. And if anyone was, we're going to be on vacation somewhere, you want to go out and have a good time. People come for a week of vacation, they want bonfires, they're going to be playing games at the yard and so on and so forth. If you have a neighbor, they do that on the weekends, maybe in the evening for a little while, maybe when they're on vacation, but not week after week after week. So we don't think it applies to that. Also, the 20 years is too long. I think three would be more reasonable, see how it goes. Everything is not always smooth. And in all these properties, screening should be a big deal because it does impact the adjacent properties. And then also, we think that the Planning Commission should think of a protocol for enforcement. What if the rules aren't being followed? Most of the vacation rental owners don't live next door, so they're away. So who ends up being the enforcers? And then the other request I would have is that these approvals should not be transferable on the sale of the property. If the property is sold, then there should be a new application process. Thank you.
Kate, thank you. I assume you're making notes on these that at some point at the end, we can maybe just answer, like if there's a, if the applicant doesn't live there, you know, the criteria for that and some of the points that were made up, brought up, that we can address those at the end. Next?
Hello, I am Teresa Brandsner and it's 210, or 21067 Elkview Circle, Richmond. And also, we own property within a mile of both of these vacation rentals that are being applied for this evening. And so I thought I'd just talk on this one instead of coming up for number six if you already make a decision. So, we already have a vacation rental just down the road from us. And that was approved within the last, well, they started operating it within the last year and a half. And I know that there's certain regulations that you put on them and restrictions. However, when we walk the neighborhood by there, we are primarily the people that live in the neighborhood. It's our neighborhood. And so we see what goes on. And so it's pretty much left up to us to report anything that's, you know, if the regulations aren't being followed. And the one thing that we have noticed with the other one is, I believe it's for four people. And maybe you can answer that for sure. But there's times we go by there, there's six cars parked in that driveway. So I have a hard time believing that there's four people renting that property when there's six vehicles parked outside. But I've never reported it because I've never, we've never had like a major big issue. But it is, it is something that it's a regulation that, when I looked up in the restrictions. But also, the reasons that we are opposing this and a lot of the neighbors in our neighborhood is because our Lake Shore neighborhood is currently zoned as a residential R1. And as current property owners and longtime residents, we expect it to maybe remain and be enforced as such within the context of the R1 zoning ordinance. And we don't feel it is compatible with the existing neighborhood. Because the neighborhood is rural, residential, it's not rental properties. And it's made up primarily of privately owned property owners that live in the home. And today, I kind of looked up some data on vacation rental homes throughout the United States and which cities they're occurring in, which counties they're occurring in. Some of them keep very good records as to how many they have occurring within their counties or within their cities. And since some of the vacation rentals have been established in some of these areas, they're kind of revamping some of their regulations. And one of those that stood out was that they are starting to require that in order to have a vacation rental home in a residential area, the property owner needs to be on the property. And making sure that they're enforcing the regulations and that things are being followed accordingly and not leave it up to the neighbors. The other thing is, is we're concerned about safety because there's no guarantee on vetting the background history of the renters. I know that they're required to keep a list of people that do rent the place, but there's no vetting or background history on them. Also, the renters' concern for the welfare of the neighborhood is probably an area that we're concerned about as residents. And also, the possibility of an increase in crime or the loud music, late nights, excessive drinking. People get up on the lake and it's, let's have fun. And that's all great and fine, but it shouldn't be in a residential neighborhood. Also, if the landlords are not living around there, they're not regulating the possibility of the nuisance we are. It increases traffic in our neighborhood. And usually you allow for the parking, so that's not a real big issue. My other concern is, we did contact the township and that's why Munson Township is involved with both of these. And I did speak to Jill Willenbring, who is the chairman of the Munson Township. And he said this was the first that he heard about these two coming up. Were they contacted prior to this?
Yes, the township was sent notice of the meeting.
So they were sent notice of the meeting, but are they, are they supposed to be able to be contacted prior to the meeting so they can put input prior to the meeting?
That is just the purpose of the notice that was sent, the applicant, and is not required to talk to the township prior to applying for the permit.
Okay, so according to, when I talked to Joe, he said that they're going to be having a meeting December 1st through Munson Township. And it will be their zoning and planning meeting. And so we're kind of requesting, or we are requesting that we be given more time to discuss this with our township. Because there is a concern, as the gentleman brought up before me, about the number of these vacation rentals that are popping up. We now have two within blocks of us if this number six comes up. In fact, my field sits right across from that, we look across. But the other one is across the lake. And now, we also were made aware that there's another one down the road. So they're popping up left and right. So it's basically setting a precedence for our residential, our rural residential neighborhoods that it's okay to sell our neighborhoods out. And I think that's where us long-term property owners are feeling a major concern. And I think that the township should have input in some way. So I would appreciate it if you would consider extra time on this, on both of these in fact, before, so that we can maybe meet with our township and have some more of the residents involved as to where they're at with this.
To that point, has Munson Township turned everything over to Stearns County as far as zoning and planning? Or do they do some of their own stuff?
The township does some of their own stuff outside shoreline. The county does everything inside shoreline.
So basically, the township doesn't get to have any say of the matter if it's shoreline?
Mr. Chair, I can comment on that, Angie Berg. So the township could be more restrictive and prohibit vacation home rentals in their township. Then that would be more restrictive and then Stearns County wouldn't be having these hearings. I would say, however, this application and the next are in process and so rules can't be retroactive. But going forward, I think having the conversation with Munson Township is a great idea.
And that's why I ask for clarification, just for you and the rest of the residents. So if it's within shoreline, this process is already going, if you understood that. But if Munson Township wanted to be more restrictive, not allowing vacation home rental after any application that's in process, they could do that. And so you're doing the right thing by meeting with them, and they may want to consider doing that. But that's a different process that won't affect the two that we're going to be considering tonight.
Okay, and then our other concern also is the number of years, 20 years for something that, you know, it's being, it's being moved into the residential areas. But like I said, when you start doing the research on it, and I just touched on it briefly this afternoon on the data out there in the United States and what they're doing with the vacation home the vacation home rentals, it's not making the hotel industry happy. They're saying, oh yeah, it brings, it helps the economy. It brings money into the county and it brings money into here and it can offer jobs through some of the restaurants, but it's not helping in other areas. So they're, they're kind of reconsidering their, their restrictions and their regulations on it. And one of them is that they're making the owner of the property responsible rather than the neighbors in those neighborhoods, especially if they're going to put them in residential neighborhoods. And that's probably our biggest problem with it and the amount of time on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Bransner, Teresa's husband. But I talked to Jeff Mergan. He says, come to you people before it goes any further to talk to you because you're the one we have to talk to. I talked to Joel Willenbring also. But in 2006, we had the same thing happen and the township put in a place, you cannot rent a place. And I was wondering when that was destroyed so we can, and never been notified. So I'd like to really stop the process of these next two until we get the answers why that was thrown out by the county when the township had it in place. Because it was our neighbor rented it out and people were coming in and out. And we put an ordinance together in our township to stop that. So we would like to know where that went wrong or if it's still in place.
Angie, do you know anything about that?
Oh.
Honey.
Is that your machine?
I'm okay.
He's got a, he's got a, are you okay?
Yep.
He probably got shocked from there. He's got a device in the turn.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, it's a heart rate because it's upset. Because Jeff asked me, why don't you talk with Gary? Well, I don't see Gary. I met him one time. He helped me with a rock, but I know, know of him. He's not a resident of our area and yet he's going to bring all these people in and out of our residence. We don't know. What happened to having a nice community and not have that type of stuff going on? And we had this in place in 2006, I'm pretty sure. And Joe, Joe couldn't answer it. I don't know if he was on the board at the time. Dan Holthaus was in charge at that time. So there should be records on the board about that. And, you know, I know you got to have a comprehensive plan, but how about us as residents? We're the ones paying tax. Been out there 42 years. Paid for the road twice to get it tarred so we could have a nice community. Now they keep bringing these people and they fly by my place. I get, I yell at people all the time because they're rude. As a resident.
Let's answer the 2006 question and then again, you're doing the right thing. Meet with the township and see if we can back this up. But you've made the point and we appreciate that. Angie, do you know anything about this 2006? Do you think it's the difference between the shoreline and the other area?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't know anything about it. I, I believe what you're saying, Gary. We would, we would have to also hear from the township and understand what changed. I've been here prior to that. I don't remember anything. We certainly have acted on several vacation home rentals and they've been noticed and we, they haven't told us that we were doing anything wrong. So we too would have to get clarification or ask Munson to give us clarification that there's some ordinance that they have that they need to tell us that they're more restrictive.
And one of the previous testifiers said, I think there was 15 in Munson Township or there's numerous on the chain. But we've had others before Munson and we've never heard nothing from Munson, but neither here nor there.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I don't know if there's an ordinance. I do know it was a situation right next door to us where there were all of a sudden different people coming and I happened to have a conversation with one of the gentlemen. He said, I'm from New York. So that was done, I think, without the county or the township knowing. And then we notified the township and they, they said, no, they went to the owners and said, guess what? That doesn't happen here in the township. You're not allowed to do that.
And so they maybe stopped it without anything formal. They just, is it being rented out now?
No, no, those owners sold it because they specifically bought it with intentions to rent it out for vacation rental.
They maybe just stopped doing it because the township talked to them and then whatever. But yeah, definitely have the township, meet with the township, have them talk to staff and then there is a process for them to become more restrictive.
Thank you.
But it would still be nice to stop this process before we get another one in our area. We should have that right and give a little more time. There's no hurry. Let's get our ducks in a row and get all the information so you guys are informed also. We'd just like to delay this.
And that's going to be up to the commission if that's the flavor of the commission.
We've got 17 residents in our area and it used to be three. It's a nice neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? You, you need to come up here. And is it, is it on this item?
No, on six.
Well, yep, we're going to get to six. Five and then six is the way we're going to do this. Anybody else in the public on this one? Whoa, one more.
My name is Dawn Jensen. I live at 19413 Florence Circle. I'm just about four houses away from the corner. I mean, we've had a lot of emails floating around with the neighborhood and everything. And, you know, I'd just like to say, we all have the same concerns about, it seems like there's one after another, after another of these VRBOs, RMBBs or whatever. It, I mean, this is, we have a nice little neighborhood. We're out walking the dogs. Everybody knows everybody else. And it's starting to look more like little mini resorts popping up everywhere and we're losing, you know, the whole neighborhood, you know, school bus goes around our circle, this type of thing. That's not, you know, we're zoned residential. We're not zoned for the hospitality business at all. And I just actually, I was sitting there thinking about this tonight. I hadn't planned on speaking, but I just had a couple of questions for the new owner.
Actually, ask me the questions.
Okay, I don't know how that works, but just from a business standpoint, I know it was said that it's going to be a family rental for a long time and then, but basically you're, you know, VRBOs are made for people that live there and rent out their own house or whatever. But if this is a family rental or relatives coming in or whatever, or is this more so once in a while used for the family? And it's basically a business. Because I know, I looked at the website and I, that they have, and I see that they have a company where they basically specialize in distressed properties, flipping, renting or whatever. I was trying to, to figure out who our new neighbors were going to be. There's no, if this is a business, I'm just really curious as far as, if it were me renting this out, I don't know how familiar they are with the bay. We're on the same bay. And where this house sits, it's, for lack of a better term, the swampy side of the bay. There's no beach per se. You could try to put a beach in there. It's usually swamped in with green stuff and weeds and this type of thing. And I'm just wondering from a business standpoint, how smart it is to even try to rent this out because the reviews, if you're putting this, you know, as Lake Shore on the chain and comparing it to a lot of the others that are, are listed on VRBO, this isn't stellar Lake Shore. And I'm just wondering what the reviews are going to look like and how this is going to deter their business. And, and then they'd be just in my head, lowering their rates or whatever and what we're going to get coming in and out from a lower standpoint. Because I know the one across the bay is that actually butts up to Cedar Island, like in the Channel area over there. It's, it's clean, you know, you've got a lot of boat traffic and stuff going in there. And I know they're getting like a 465 a night rate, right in, in that range in there. Beautiful place and, and all that. But where this house is sitting, you know, I, I don't want to, you know, make it sound bad, but if you look on there, I mean, we're just a couple, we're right in that one little dip over there. I mean, we have weeds, green stuff and sitting in there, I, I just wonder from a business standpoint, how.
I think you made your point, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
We'll get them, we'll get them to answer that when we're all done with everything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I should have shortened it up quite a bit. I'm just, I'm just really, like I said, I mean, we just don't want it to return, to turn into resort areas. It's our neighborhood.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, and take a point of that to answer it later on, but not now. You want to testify? Please come up. If anybody's going to testify, we want to go home tonight at some point. So come on up, sit ahead, stand in the front. Let's keep it, we want to hear you.
My name is Kelly Reffsland, address 19214 Faywood Court, Richmond. So our property is literally right across this Forest Hill Road, right across. My concern is we're our residential area. My children come home, my grandchildren come home. They bring their dogs. We're, you know, very much family oriented. It concerns me every week with what we're probably going to have to be facing. And I want my children, my grandchildren, all their pups to know that they still have a safe residency and, and we know what we're, we're up against. My concern is 20 years, definitely. I'd much rather see it at three. The other thing that I'd like to understand is who is responsible? If there's things that are out of hand, who do you call? Do you call the sheriff? Do we call the commissioners? Do we call, you know, the owner? Who do we call? You know, because that's very concerning and I don't want to, I don't want to have to worry every week, you know, about who's pulling in. So if you could take that in consideration, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. And staff will respond to the questions at the end. Looks like that's it. Let's do the emails and letters, enter them and just do an overview of them. Heidi, we all got them, we all read them, but for the record, we'll enter the full document into the record, but you just can do the overview.
Yep. All right, so I received five emails regarding this request. One, Larry and Patricia Gurecki, who are opposed. They don't want strangers in and out of the neighborhood, want to keep this a family home area. Jennifer Schmitz would prefer a shorter timeframe than 20 years, like three to five years. Require a privacy fence from the lake to the home. Implement quiet hours. Confirm the seven parking spaces are off-street and not on the road. Paul and Kristy Abrahamson would prefer a three-year timeframe on the permit. No other rentals in the neighborhood. Julie McCauley is opposed. Based on comments from friends who live near VRBOs, if granted, approve three years instead of 20. Michael Scully is opposed. Maintenance of Florence Road has been an uphill battle and a rental owner would be less inclined to favor improvements. No plus side to the neighborhood if this is granted.
So I think if we've gotten all the written documentation, we've heard from the public, nobody's on Zoom, I assume? Nope, there isn't. So maybe a motion to close the public hearing would be in order?
I'll make that motion now. Close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Rich, seconded by Sean. Close the public hearing. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed. So let's start with Mr. Barak.
Close, Barak.
Barak? Answer or respond to some of the, and then the staff will go more specific of the other questions that were asked.
Sure. There's a lot of them, so I'm going to try my best. If you can help, if anybody can remind me, that'd be great too. But so as far as accountability and I, I live seven minutes away door to door in Cold Spring, like I live right, right in, in the suburbs right there in Cold Spring. I plan on having security cameras at the place to monitor who's coming in and out.
Little closer to the microphone, a little louder.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I plan on having security cameras on site so I can monitor who's coming in and out. I don't want extra people. I don't want to not have a permit, you know, and I don't want to have reasons for the neighbors to complain. You know, as far as quiet hours and those kinds of things, you know, whatever the, the city would consider quiet hours, you know, I, I wouldn't mind doing a couple hours better than that. That's not a big deal to me to set the expectations with the tenants to, or the renters to make sure it's a little easier. In terms of the shoreline, I think our goal is to clean it up as much as we can in a legal fashion, you know, so that we're not going to be ticketed or anything like that. But, you know, in over, in order to, you know, de-weed the area and that kind of thing in the future would be something that we'd like to address. We have, we don't plan on doing it until, you know, we spring next year, we're a little late in the season for that. But as far as, I'm trying to think of what else, the, the business plan and the amount, I mean, it's a five-bedroom. I, I don't expect to be renting it for very cheap. I'm, I'm not looking for, if I had to lower it that much, it wouldn't be a sound business for me anymore and it would not be, you know, it wouldn't cut it on the rent and the renovations and everything. We're pretty, into it pretty deep as far as the renovations are concerned. So if it's not renting at that rate, I would, you know, it would be inclined to sell it at that point. But hopefully I wouldn't be looking to pass the permit on to anyone else. Like that's not, you know, anything that I'm going for or looking for.
Okay, Heidi?
So a couple of things I had written down, sale of the property. So sale of the property would trigger needing a new permit. This permit would expire if the property were to transfer hands. So it can't transfer the permit from one owner to another owner. And then enforcement, so if they, if the neighbors have complaints, they certainly should call our office and let us know or send us an email letter outlining what those complaints are and we can get those addressed with the landowner. If there's continued complaints that aren't being addressed and aren't being addressed, we do have the option to bring the permit back to the board for potential revocation of the permit if those complaints aren't addressed. If something comes up over the weekend, that is when they would call the sheriff's office at that point and report that, that complaint if it's something over the weekend.
If I may interject, however, I mean, if you've got people that are shooting shotguns or you're doing fireworks, they've got fire out of control, then that's the sheriff's fault. People that are, are being irresponsible, they don't think that's.
All right. Those are the main things that I can address.
Parking, the seven vehicles, somebody asked in the email, are they guaranteed to be off-road?
Their site plan and the site shows that they have that many parking spaces off-road. Yeah, it's, it's intended to be off-street parking. So we have gotten a couple complaints on other ones where they've been parking on the road and we've addressed that with those owners and that has improved as far as we're aware. But yeah, that intent is that that's all off-street parking and not parking on, on the road. The one other note I had written down was background checks or vetting of the renters. I don't know if Mr. Barak can address that, how that's done, if that's done.
So, so our plan would be to, you know, collect the driver's license of the, at least the main renter and then the, the license plates and the addresses of everybody there that's, that's planning on being there. And usually, I mean, I would, I would imagine that we'd be able to look into, I mean, we're, we're not planning on renting to anybody that's, you know, you know, younger than 25. We're not looking to have a party house. We're not looking to have events there. And all those expectations will be set with the, with the folks before they rent the place. And we're not doing any auto bookings. We're going to be able to review them and do a background check or, you know, at least a cursory check of every tenant that comes in.
Were there any questions, members, that you recall that weren't addressed? Anything else addressed, not addressed? I think we addressed it all.
Mr. Chair, I guess we go through this every time we go into a new neighborhood. And, but I have one question because at every house we've set up, if the owner wasn't living there or within a few miles, we have somebody who's in charge. Now where is that, the name of that person? Because that's the person that the neighbors should be calling if there's a problem. Because we've had this all over. I agree, we have to set it maybe shorter years. And why is this becoming a big thing? My sister was looking to buy a lake home this year. Everybody who has a lake home went nuts this year and the last two years, whatever it was worth, they decided to add an extra, oh, we're just going to add 100 or 200. Whatever it was worth, they decided to add an extra, oh, we're just going to add $100,000 or $200,000 onto what our house was worth. An average person can't go out and buy that house and pay for it. So they buy it and they rent it out part-time, that's the only way they can pay for the house. So I see these people's point of view, but if you want to buy a house on a lake, they've just gone, we've looked at houses on the, on the chain. And what I wouldn't live in is $300,000 or $400,000. And, but there are ways, we've gone through this in every, and as far as the complaints, a lot of people say, well, it's the people, those that are renting it. I think you have, you'll find there's just as many, the people who own a place on the lake, and they come three times a summer or four times a summer, they cause just as much trouble as these people that you're renting it to. Because you've got, we've got so many things set up for these, that these people, between the owner and these people, if you get a, do something bad, you're going to lose your license right away to have this thing. And the owner doesn't want to do that. And if you, and if it's a crappy place, you're going to get negative reviews, so then nobody's going to come either. So I don't think, what have we had, one or two complaints now through the years in the rental properties?
Um, ma'am.
Angie?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, somehow I thought it was a county board there for a second.
That's okay.
We, we have had, we've had three complaints on the chain. Two are related to parking, one was related to loud partying, fireworks, et cetera. That one, we did threaten to revoke, and that was right before the pandemic. And then things just kind of stopped getting rented. I think for a period of time, we got no complaints on it this year. And then the one on Sock Lake, that's continued till a future meeting, that one has been a series of complaints. And that's one of the reasons they've, the new owners have tabled.
And then one of the ladies said, well, she walked by, there was a lot of cars there, and there should only be like four people. I think our four people, or five people, or six people, that's only supposed to be staying overnight, right? You can have visitors during the day, as long as they park where they're supposed to. But you're only supposed to, if you're allowed five people to be staying there, that's all that's supposed to be sleeping in the house, right?
And that's based on the septic system, correct?
Right.
It's.
Sorry if I comment on that.
Okay. Not right now, the public hearing's closed, but maybe on six you can. But you, so it's based on the septic system, and again, it's got to be pleased. And if we decide to do this, one of the issues was asking for a continuance. I don't know if we'd gain something by that or not, but it's an option. But the comparison I can use, Painsville Township's got fif, you know, 12 to 15 solar farms. They're having a public hearing, they're going to consider doing a more restrictive zoning of the solar farms to stop that many solar farms in Painsville Township. So Munson Township, definitely, you're meeting with them, that's a start. We're recommending body to the county board. County Board, Commissioner Mergan, Persky, others, make that decision. So we only recommend, so that is a final action, so that, that's another process that you've got in this. But, members, other questions or thoughts about continuance, or whatever the members want?
Mr. Chair, question for Heidi and Angie. So I looked through the ordinance, and we talk about vacation home rentals and private home rentals, but we don't define a vacation home. So a person could own 12 vacation homes. That might be something the county board might want to consider defining. Because I, I recognize, I think some of the discussion today is, when does operating vacation homes become a business? And that might be something for the county board to think about, how we actually define what we mean by a vacation home. Because I didn't see a definition, we have the conditions in the ordinance, but I didn't see language defining what we mean by that.
Angie?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Jason, we do have a definition, it's on the screen. It's basically if you rent anything less than 30 consecutive days. So this, it does not regulate people who lease or rent month-to-month. That, that's answering your specific question, your more general question, that the county board should look at limiting or doing something. That would be a discussion that you, as a planning commission, as your, as advisory to the county board, would have to say, we think you should change something, and here's what it is, just like you've done over the years with mining, or solar, or feedlots. So yes, that, that would be advisory to the board. We do define it currently, we do not have a density limit. I know we, I had a lot of calls on this last week from some of the people probably here today. And we don't have a density limit, just as our chair was stating for solar, we don't have a limit. If somebody wants a limit or a density standard, the township would have to currently be more restrictive, or ask the county board to change the ordinance.
So if, that, that was helpful. So if someone rents a home for two months to the same person, no permit, you don't do anything. And then I don't believe we've had, to our knowledge, one owner ask for more than one vacation home rental to date on the list. I don't remember that, but that's a great.
We have one person, I think, that has two or three.
Okay. See, and that's a great point of, we, I think we should get that on our radar, because now, again, I can see somebody having a lake home and trying to help pay the taxes or something, and renting it out for a month or two, happens in Florida, Arizona, all over the place. I can see that, but we, I think we'd want to be cautious that somebody would do that on 10 homes in the county. But what they're on to is really meeting with the townships, Wakefield, Munson, Painsville Township. And I don't know that we've got one on Cronus that I'm aware of, but, or maybe one. But where these areas are going, those townships, residents might want to be talking to those townships and getting them to look at more restrictive. The one issue that wasn't addressed, I thought of it, is the fire pit location and the bench 100 feet away from the neighbor's bedroom window.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure about the fire pit, like where, where exactly it's located.
It's 100 feet from the neighbor's bedroom window.
I, I don't need to keep it, that's not a big deal to me.
You don't mean to keep it?
I, I don't need to keep it.
You don't need to keep it.
It's not a big deal to me whether it's there or not, and obviously, we could move it somewhere else that's further away, too.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if anything's 100 feet away from anything on a lake lot, you're a long way away. Because most of them don't have a hard time being 100 feet away from the water, or the road, or whatever.
Might be a little close for a bedroom window, but, but I, there was a question, I just thought of it, that wasn't addressed, so I.
Also, Mr. Chair, as far as, like I see the rentals, but if they were renting them out, like you say, a month at a time, there's losses, they could have any number of them. How many people in St. Cloud have a business of they own houses or apartments and rent them out for longer terms? And there's no limit on that, as long as you abide by all the rules. And that's kind of the way, the direction we're going with these rentals.
Angie?
Mr. Chair, the only other thing I wrote down that perhaps would be a question for the applicant was screening or fencing along the property lines or property line. That could be something, again, if you all decide to continue this for further action, Mr. Barak could come back, and he's heard all of these concerns, lots of discussion. He may choose to even want to table it and come back with a better application, or a different application, identifying how he's addressing all of these concerns. I just wanted to make sure we have the screening and fencing one down. And I also wanted to remind you, one more, that you probably remember years ago on the chain of lakes, there's a lot of controversy on one. And then the planning commission ended up giving them one year, kind of as a trial. And they ended up never renting it out for other reasons, and then since sold. But that is an option, we heard that as well, that number of years is too long. So just remember, you've done that, you could do that here or not, if you found different reasons.
So your reaction to the screening, number one, and number two, maybe the other way around, number one, your reaction to continuing it, to address some of the issues, and then two, the screening?
So with the screening?
Actually, number one would be number one. Your, your thought about continuing it?
No, I, I think I'm okay with it, as is. It just, with the screening in general, that would be the only, I mean, if, would I need to, to have a continuance to like say I'm going to address the fire pit? Or would it be like, you know, address the fire pit and then move it? Because I'm happy to move that, that's not a big deal. As far as the screening portion is concerned, the, the only part that doesn't have a tree line, or, you know, you know, at least, you know, you'd have to walk right up to it to actually see through, is the, the bottom left shoreline there, the last like maybe 15, 20 feet, you know, between those two houses, would be the only spot that doesn't have screening, but it's screened the whole way through. It's kind of why I bought it, so I wouldn't be bothering somebody in particular. That was, that was, you know, what, one of the first things that appealed to me, is just how much goes down there.
Okay, members? What, should we go to the findings, or somebody wants to do something else? Go to the findings, I'm hearing? Okay, number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, as I just reviewed the ordinance, yes, it is consistent with Sections 4.18, 6.62, and 9.9.6A of our land use and zoning ordinance, number 439.
Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county list applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, it does conform to the comprehensive plan goals and objectives and the business goals. When we look at number three, the two acknowledged tourism's economic value and the prospective contribution to the industry, to both the diversity of the econ, of the county economic base and the potential for growth.
Three, is the proposal compatible with existing neighborhood, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, as this is going to be a vacation home rental, so it's not a full-time resort opportunity. It'll be rented on a probably intermittent basis. Do you believe it is consistent with the nature of the neighborhood?
I would say that it's consistent as far as a home, but it's inconsistent because of the transient movement. Four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated an ordinance will be satisfied? It would be the conditions.
Plus whatever rules that he sets up himself, I guess, besides this. Okay.
Okay. Other issues pertinent to the matter? Township input, none. For the record, they say they didn't know about it, and for the record, they've been notified, so. And they're meeting, residents are meeting with them, and they're a December meeting. Federal, state, local permits? It'd be the local permits through the county. Environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection, probably not applicable. Information submitted regarding property values, we received nothing. Public health, safety, traffic generation impacts?
Mr. Chair, just from some of the, the public comments, there does seem to be concern among several of the neighbors. It's not public health, safety, or traffic, but it is nature of the neighborhood.
Public service facilities, including schools, parks, streets, and utilities? There was a concern brought up about the traffic on the local, on the township road. Financial assurance is required to guarantee location or cleanup, that's not applicable. Other issues pertinent, I would say the number of permits, vacation home rentals on the chain of lakes.
Mr. Chair, the, the recommendation is for expiration of the permit on December 31st, 2041. I would recommend we knock that back to December 31st, 2031, so a 10-year, which is in line with.
I would even go less, three to five, maybe.
Five?
Three, or, they've been talking three, because we did a three, I'd be willing to go up to five, but three to five at the most.
If my two cents, or whatever it is, would be no more than three, just with the concern, let this work out. If he does what he says he's going to do, there aren't the issues, no problem. If there are, then we can address them. I, I wouldn't go more than three, personally.
I'd be happy with three.
I'm okay with that.
Good. Are you okay with three? You said 10. It seems like the consensus, you know, again, whatever.
A minimum as, as basically a trial period. These things will work themselves out. They get, police get called, whatever, they, they get their permit yanked, otherwise they renew.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I.
Commissioner Persky?
The one we did three years was that, that small environmental lake that was on a small, I think, group of five homes, okay? And if we go with three years with this one, I would say we're going to see a good number that are going to be very similar to this one. So then are we going to say three years is going to be, then come the standard?
That's what I would say.
From, okay.
And I think we've done this with sand pits, we've done this with other things. It all kind of depends, you know, that's why we have the discretion where they're at. You know, if this was a lake in Crow River Township, it'd be 20 years, wouldn't be an issue, there wouldn't be one person here. We do a sand pit in Crow Lake Township, nobody shows up. We do one in Rockville Township, we've got 150 people here. So that's why we kind of use the discretion of where they are. And so that always will kind of be, I know that drives some of us nuts, but it'll be a little discretionary. But in this case, obviously, it's high population, lot of concerns, not knowing what will happen. I think three is legitimate. And the next one, maybe 10 or 20 is legitimate, I don't know. But in this case, I think there's a consensus to do three, if the recommendation is granted.
So what would that be, 2025? Wow, we're starting, we're going to be 2022.
So it's 20, December 31st, 2025, if it's recommended. I mean, it's November.
2024 would give them three years.
It's November now, though, I mean, for all practical purposes, nothing's going to happen until.
Well, it'd give them 23, 24.
22, 23, and 24.
And 24.
Oh, I'm sorry.
December 30th of 24.
Math wasn't my strongest class in Spring Hill Elementary. Okay?
So for, for clarification.
And again, that's only if this is recommended to be approved, that's what we're talking about.
Yep. So if we approve 2024, so we give them the three years, and then Munson Township prohibits the establishment of vacation homes. At the end of 2024, this is done.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you know people that don't want that to happen, then they got to show up at the township meeting. And the people that do want that to happen, they have to show up at the township meeting, and the township can decide. So we did the findings, we had a discussion, a motion here or there is in order. To approve, recommend approval, or recommend a denial. Remember, again, we're recommending body to the county board, the county board makes the final decision.
Mr. Chair, I will approve, make a motion to approve this with the five conditions, and the date changed to 2000, December 31st of 2024.
Okay, motion's been made.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made by Ken, seconded by Sean, to recommend approval of the application. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
No? No. Roll call. All those in favor of granting, recommending approval of the application, when I call your names, say yes. If you're opposed, say no. Rich Blankish?
No.
Kim Osmond?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Jason Wiedemann?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
What's the vote?
Three to two. Did the chair vote?
Not yet. The chair votes no.
Three to three.
So the motion fails on a lack, on the tie vote. Correct?
Mr. Chair, we, Mr. Chair, we had this come up not too long ago. The planning commission ordinance indicates that if there's a tie vote of the planning commission, the county board decides, which basically means that this does not go on consent, because then no decision would be made. So it means it would go on the county board's regular agenda for November 30th, and then they would decide. If, if I could, before some people leave, I would just like to be clear, it is a confusing process. The planning commission holds the public hearing tonight, public hearing is closed, the county board will hold their meeting on November 30th. It is not a public hearing, and, and you're welcome to come, it's a public meeting, but testimony on these items will not be heard on November 30th. If the board wants to hear public testimony outside of you calling them or emailing them, they would hold their own public hearing, and we would do this all over again with sometime in probably January. So, thank you for that, there's probably questions about that in the-
And that's a good clarification. So again, to be clear, the county board will have this on their agenda on November 30th. If they do want to take public comment, they'll set their own public hearing, which would be in January. And if they don't want to take public comment, they want to read our minutes and everything, and act on it at that meeting, they could without public comment. Got it? Okay? Item, so no recommendation to the county board. Item number six. Heidi?
To consider an interim use permit request submitted by Gary and Lisa Glaw, Atsigo, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.18, 6.62, and 9.9.6A of Searns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number 439. The request is to operate a vacation home rental in the residential one zoning district. The proposal is located on Lot 10, Block 1, Breezeaway Shore's Line, southeast of Elkview Circle, in Section 36 Munson Township. This vacation home request is for fifteen years, located on Elkview Circle, property is in compliance with lot coverage, the home was granted variances for its current location. Wetland and feedlots will not be impacted. This is, this one is located on Horseshoe Lake, which is a recreational development lake. There are over a hundred and twenty-five residential dwellings, two planned unit developments, and one resort within a half mile of the property. Water tests for nitrates and coliform bacteria has been submitted, the septic system has been certified. This is a three-bedroom home, so occupancy will be limited to eight people. There's adequate room for off-street parking. The septic is sized properly for a three-bedroom home. The lodging license is required for this one, too, and environmental health staff, staff have been to the property and informed the property owner of what's needed to obtain the lodging license. Proposed conditions, planning commission set a date or event upon which the IEP would expire. The applicant is requesting fifteen years. Maximum occupancy of the home shall be eight people. The applicant shall obtain a lodging license from Environmental Services prior to renting the home. The licensee shall keep a report detailing the use of the home by recording at a minimum the name, address, phone number, and vehicle license number of all guests using the property, and a copy shall be provided to the department upon request. And a ring buoy attached to a three-sixteenth inch manila rope or equivalent material not over sixty feet in length is required near the shore as life-saving equipment. And that's all that I have.
Okay. Members, if you visit the site, when I call your names, say yes. If you did not, say no. Rich Blenkish?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
I did. Jason Wiedemann?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky? Yep, we all visited the site. Applicant introduction, just state your name and record for the record, Gary?
Gary Glaw, 9310 92th Street Northeast, Atsigo, Minnesota.
Anything you want to add to the staff report?
Is now my time to comment?
Correct.
We are, we are seeking permit not to, not with the intention to do this as a full-time, only to dabble in it when we're not, when we're not there to use it on our own. We're seeking permit because it is allowed by the county, and, and if we do dabble in that process, we want to follow the official controls that are set forth, and not try to do it under the radar, like, like some other people that are doing. We're seeking fifteen years. I, I did not see any guidance to the timeline for this application. I recommend that that, that be put in, but the one in our immediate neighborhood is also approved for fifteen years, so I would expect consistency with that on our application as well. I do not know everybody on, on Horseshoe Circle. We love the area. I do however know Gary and Teresa Bransner seated behind me, and I, and I'm, I'm here to say I'm, I'm embarrassed that I did not go talk to them about this, and I, and for that, I apologize sincerely. We do have outstanding relationship with our, with our immediate neighbors, and have discussed it with them, and have the gentleman's agreement that should there be any issues that cannot be adequately resolved, that the process would stop. Neighborhood relationships are more important to us than renting out our vacation home. So, that being said, I will, I, I agree wholeheartedly with all the comments that people have made tonight, and if there is a, a meeting with the township, I would like to be involved with that as well. I have seen speeding through the neighborhood based on the other rental in the neighborhood, and I don't appreciate that either. And if that becomes an issue at our place, we encourage, expect objective feedback, and, and it will stop. That's all.
Okay. We'll open up the public hearing at this point. If there's anyone in the room or on Zoom that would want to comment on this issue, please step up, state your name and address for the record, and share your comments.
My name is Lee Steckman. I live at 20929 Elkview Circle. I've lived there for twenty-four years. I've either vacationed or lived on the chain my entire life. I've vacationed at the resorts up and down 22, excluding Cozy Corners. My biggest concern, and if all of you indeed have driven Elkview Circle and Elkview Road, you know how dangerous those corners are, and how bad the situation is for anyone walking on those roads. Now, what this has done, and again, what you're proposing, well, let me back up. A year and a half ago, I spoke in front of you, showing and telling my opposition to the first rental unit that you put in, or allowed, and I am opposed to this one. And again, the main reason for my opposition is the danger that it imposes on anyone walking their dog, their child, and I know these people. I, I have met them, their son, three, four years ago, I, I don't know how old he is right now, but he was a baby, and they were walking down the street with that baby in a wagon, or pushing a stroller. Today, you can't do that. I cannot walk my wife down Elkview Circle, or my grandchildren, without the danger, and because of the influence of the traffic, be it motorized, four-wheelers, mopeds, with the increased traffic on Elkview Circle and Elkview Road. We also get an overflow from Cozy Corners, from those people. They don't go down, up and down 22, Highway 22, they go out the backside and come down our roads and travel the circle. Now, what you're doing, again, is adding more danger to people walking or biking around Elkview Circle. That's my biggest opposition. Today, I, I don't think they would bring their child or walk their child around Elkview Circle. And if all of you have driven it, you know what I'm talking about. There is no police, there is no security, there is no one to regulate what goes on in that neighborhood. And I don't think any one of you would want to live next to one of these rental units when there is no one to go to in an emergency. We can call 911, but it takes twenty, thirty minutes for an officer to show up. I know, because they've been at the accidents, I've been involved with helping accidents on Elk, or on the county road and 22, and it took over thirty minutes to have anyone respond to a 911 call. Think of what's going to happen on Elkview Road or Elkview Circle. I, I, I don't understand how this can continue. That, and, and it's just gonna, it's gonna continue, and someone's gonna get hurt. I cannot bring, I, my wife, I cannot walk her down that road. So, additional traffic, I, I'm just so opposed to it, and, and again, three years ago, four years ago, ten years ago, you could do it. You can't do it today.
Thank you.
You can do it in the winter, but you can't do it in the summer. And there's no one to regulate the fireworks, the partying. People come up to the lake to party. But on Elkview Circle, most of us are either retired or semi-retired, and we're elderly. And you see more and more people, you don't see the vacation, or the, the summertime people as much as you used to. They're buying their homes to retire there. And if you continue to do these vacation rentals, I think it's wrong.
Thank you.
I don't want to take up any more of your time. I, I spoke last time about my fear of one being rented out to a fraternity. I think that's, maybe that some of you might remember me talking about, because someday it'll happen. You'll get a fraternity or something in there. But, and three years, I agree with Teresa, and Gary, and what you've done with the first, if, if you're going to approve it, stay with the three years, so it can be regulated.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Teresa Bransner, 21067 Elkview Circle. And yes, I know Gary and his wife, very nice couple, and I have nothing personally against them. Beautiful people, beautiful child that they have. They walk around the circle when they, when they first came up, they, we ran into them quite often. And, and I understand why people probably want to do the vacation rentals. I just, again, want to reiterate what we said earlier. It, it's the same thing as, as number five with the, with the vacation rental over on the other side. Like Lee said, there is an increased number of people. It's a safety factor. The renters don't have any concern for our neighborhood, per se. They aren't there every day. They come there for that weekend, or for whatever week. They're there whatever time that they're renting it out. We lose some of our privacy. The center circle of that Elkview Circle, Gary and I own, and we have a problem with more trespassing with some of the strangers that come, because some of the people that do come just think that, hey, we can cut across here, oh, she's got horses down there. So I've constantly got to watch that also, because I've got people coming into my yard, and, and sometimes it's fine, I'll, I'll just go up and talk to them, but it's just, it's increased up there, and I, and there's a liability thing there for us if they do come onto our property. And then also, the, I forgot what I was going to say. I think it's great that he wants to work with us through the township, but again, we want to go to the township, and I do have a question to you. You brought up the township, so if the township sets up that there's no vacation rentals, then that pretty much stops this process?
Not this process, future processes.
Future processes, okay.
This is in motion, so this can't be stopped by them.
Right.
But, future.
But in the future, that's one way to do it. Because I know when we look at the number of vacation homes, I just feel like, okay, because I live in a shoreline district, I'm more apt to have vacation rentals than somebody that's not, and that's really not fair to me as a, as a property owner in a, in a residential setting. And also, Mr. Mossman, you had made the comment that not people, people can't afford these properties on the lake. We didn't just afford it, we worked for it all of our lives.
You're there a hundred percent, but years ago, I, we owned property, too, and I've watched property every year. And a house that was, two years ago, $200,000, nice house. This summer, we went and looked at some of them that people had, and they wanted $400, $500,000.
Well, if you look at the data across the country on vacation home rentals, and what they do to the property value in those areas, it increases even more. So yeah, I could say yay, let's go for it. In fact, I have a property down the road that I could turn into a vacation rental tomorrow, but I don't want to do it to my neighborhood, because people live out there in a residential neighborhood, because it is a residential neighborhood, not a rental area. And also, it's not about my, selling my property, making more money. I appreciate living there, so does everybody else, but it, it does increase my property value, so that's not an issue with me. It, it doesn't downgrade my property value. But you will be selling out these residential neighborhoods on the lake shore, because it is a marketable place, and I know it's a great, great for the, the economy, and it's about money, and tax dollars. And I don't know, I don't know how they tax them, but also another thing that's out there in the data on the vacation rentals is what happens is, it starts out as private owners, and then the commercial, commercial businesses pop in, and pretty soon they're buying up five, six properties, or they're watching for them, and they're hopping on them, and, and then it becomes more of an industry. And so, it becomes a, a battle between, is it going to stay residential, or are you going to rent out all those properties on the lake?
See, my issue is with the whole thing is, the common guy that's got a job in town and making ten, twelve dollars an hour, he can't afford these places, but he can afford to go rent one for a week.
He could also go out to one of the resorts.
There you want to put him at a resort, and I wouldn't go to a resort, I wouldn't send my worst enemy to a resort.
And why is that?
Because you're, you're, you're crammed in there.
Yeah, let's, this is a debate. You two can talk in the hall after the meeting.
Okay.
You made your point, thank you. Let's hear from your husband.
Gary Bransner, 210 Elkview Circle. Ken, you just made a good point. You want to go to those places, but yet you just put 200 more campsites on Cozy Corners, and screw up our environment, 200 more boats or more on that lake, and have you ever went there on a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? And if you ever went there on a Friday, Saturday and Sunday, you ain't sitting at the dock and fishing. The boats are flying by you, you can't fish. The waves are this high. Come and sit by my dock, you'll see. But now you're going to put another one because it's more nicer? And you just put 200 more in cozy corner? And Lee made a very good point. Before he bought his home, he rented down the way. There's all kinds of rental places that these people can go and rent on a daily basis. And that's what they do. We have enough commercial out there. Leave the residential alone. And my wife made another good point. The people that you gave approval down the road, he's got another one down the road, and that's all he does. He's never lived there. He knows nothing about our neighborhood. He's never introduced himself to us. He's never stopped and said hi to Lee. And Lee walks that road every day with his dog with about five other people, every day. And I almost hit somebody. And I've been out there 42 years, right on this corner, right by Gary. 200 came around that corner, and I almost hit him. And I drive it every day for 42 years. That's how dangerous it gets. So for a comprehensive plan, you gave 15 years, 20 years, and you don't even have data on it, how good it does. Why would you give somebody 15, 20 years without any information about it? You did your research. Because they did it in Minneapolis, doesn't mean it's good out here. Or if they did it in Phoenix, Arizona, it doesn't mean it's good here. And you are our board. You represent us people. And we're here to let you know that it's not right. It's not right in this circumstance.
Okay, appreciate it. There's somebody else that wants to testify? If anybody else wants to testify, please come up.
Just, Sandy Whistler, the 19491 Florence Circle. I guess this whole process, I think you, as a board, you need to be consistent. So if it's whatever county, I mean, it's Stearns County, I think abroad, and then the cities can do what they're going to do. But I think you can't do 15 years here, and then five years here, and then three years there. I think it just, just decide a number, and then look at each individual thing. To me, it just seems if you're going to do three or five years, or whatever number you pick, then it should apply to all of Stearns County. My personal thought is because it's consistent then. So if someone's going to buy something and they want to turn it into a vacation home or not turn it into it, it's the, I was just astounded when I got the, I would have ignored the postcard for the Florence, the Forest Hill Road, except for when I requested the county data. And I'm like, 20 years? I mean, iPhone's 14 years old. It came out 14 years ago. 20 years, this is crazy. This is, and then I looked, and I'm like, oh my gosh, they've actually given, a lot of times in very recent years, 20 and 21, you know, 10 and 15-year permits, which, I don't know. I don't understand that at all. So I would just, as a property owner in the area, I would strongly encourage you to pick shorter number of years for a vacation rental property or interim use permit, I guess is the official title, and then have that apply across the board. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Five 20-years we did. So out of all of those, there was five that were 20. So, just, right. Anybody else here from the public or on Zoom?
I'll make a motion and close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've got.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you do. Some emails, and for the record, again, we've got them. You'll do the overview, and we'll enter them into the record. I've got two.
Yep. So for, from Lori and Earl Babel. They are opposed, stating this will quickly become a party house with loud music and voices. Guests will have company, added traffic. Will there be a background check on renters? Fireworks will be a problem. And then the other email was from Teresa Bransner, who we did hear from tonight.
Okay. So now, Mike.
Make a motion and close the public hearing.
Second. Mike's moved to close the public hearing. Jason's second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed. I'd really rather not get philosophical, but I'm gonna. You saw how I voted last time. There are so many times, Solar Farms is a great example. How many years ago did we do this first Solar Farm? We had nothing, 10 years. It wasn't an issue, one Solar Farm. Well, people drive, what happens? Well, today, we've got, I lose track, I exaggerate sometimes, 40, 40-some Solar Farms in Stearns County. Some of you probably really don't care about that. I do, because we got 15 of them in Beenzel, and my boys are going to live there. So I care about that. The walking and the roads and everything, none of those were vacation homes over the last 10 years. And I'm not against you, but I'm just saying, look at that. I have friends there. We've visited there. That neighborhood has changed. Because people, what I would have done, one, I did buy a lake home. I bought it in a dead end. We had two neighbors, now we have four neighbors. No through traffic, we're off the road. I didn't buy a road that was even with the lake, because you can walk out, how nice it is, and then it gets flooded. We walked down 25 feet, because we don't want water in our basement. So we've made very specific decisions on where we bought. And again, people, that's tough. I mean, it's like, this would be like if I'd be talking to my son, and he'd be complaining about all those houses, I would have said, well, why'd you buy that? And why didn't you buy someplace more quiet, or whatever? But people buy the damnedest things because they want to be in a lake, and so they do that. And Lake Gronus, Angie knows, on the south side of Lake Gronus, there's 400 acres. The Peterson property, it's a trust, no development. 400 acres. I don't know how many acres are on the lake. Some of it's farmland. That family intentionally said, you want to keep that open field, you don't want nobody in there. They bought it, they didn't develop it. There'll never be development there, because it's in a trust perpetually. And over 550 descendants would have to agree to allow anybody to build. There's no road, there's a, the road is worse than the road in our farm to get it back in there. And my philosophical speech here is, people have to make decisions on what you do. Years ago, people dumped sewage in the lake. Well, we got beyond that, hopefully. We're smarter than that now. So we can't control everybody's issues. And issues are made sometimes by people. Now, this is an issue, and we're going to have to deal with it. And, you know, the county board's going to have to deal with it, obviously. So, and then, I agree with Ken 100%. I grew up on the farm, worked their whole life. We never went to the lake, we never got to do anything. Mom and dad were so happy when I bought the lake, and I'm glad that they both were alive and they saw it. But we never went to the lake. And they were so happy that I got there and that they could enjoy it with me. And I was happy that they could enjoy it with us. But what about a poor farm boy? You say what you say, that's true. What about lakes? They don't want accesses. No boat accesses, because it's my lake. And I fought hard over the years for accesses to lakes, because people have a right to own a boat, and to be able to take their family on a pontoon is what we did for 15 years, because we couldn't afford a lake place. So all those decisions, we have to kind of, you have to be sensitive to everything. I mean, you've got to be sensitive for that guy that makes $12 an hour, that he can put a boat in the lake, or that he can rent a house. Because I agree with you, I don't want to be in a camper where my door hits his door, or I can hear him snore in my camper. I really don't care for that. So everybody's different, but there's a lot of choices. So there, that's my soapbox. That, again, I feel for everybody. I feel for him, but I guess, obviously, when you try to do something that's not popular, you're going to go through, Gary. And I feel for you guys, because you've been living there for all these years, and you've seen this all happen around you. If I'd have an open lot beside me on either side of the lake or my home, I'd buy it to make sure nobody else could build there. But I don't. So I put up with my neighbors, and we're lucky, both in town and at the lake. We have great neighbors. So, anyway, discussion.
I guess one point would be.
Microphone, Sean, please.
I'm sorry. One point would be the number of years, if we're going to adjust that or not.
Well, again, my position would be absolutely, and Gary can say, well, that one's got 15. Well, that was when we had one Solar Farm. Now we got 20 Solar Farms, or 40, but in the lake home rental. So when we had one vacation home, well, maybe 10, 20 was fine, and it was in a more desolate area. It's a different day, obviously, today. So, and again, we'll never be consistent to your comment and to your comment. Welcome to the real world, that things change, neighborhoods change. Again, it's harder. If nobody's here, it'd be easier to grant the 15. But when you've got people here, you've got to listen to them, because we do need to listen to the people. So I'd say the consistent thing in Munson Township, tonight's three years. So, but again, the commission can decide what they want to do.
Mr. Chair, just out of fairness, just to look at this the way it is here and the history, a vast majority of them are from 10 to 20 years. There's a number of 15s. And a number of them have expired or been sold and just let run out of use. So a lot of these earlier ones are already gone. They don't exist anymore. So it's not inconsistent. But like you said, we're going, we have to adjust and change with the policies, with the changing environment and how we feel about it. So, and how the public feels about it, so.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add on to that, we've only done one three-year. So we have a lot of 10s and 15s and some 5s. But we've only done one three-year. So that's a bit out of the norm for what we've done. I would be interested in hearing from the applicant regarding the time. I'll reiterate what I said, the consistency issue. There's a major problem here you guys have on your hands with it. If you put three years upon us, given the permit fee and the process to go through to get the permit, I'm going to rent the heck out of this thing for three years. I, we don't know right now if we're going to rent it at all. But we're applying for the permit because it's available, and we're allowed to do it. And my wife and I debated this ad nauseam. We have a lot of blood, sweat and tears into this place. We built it with our own two hands. Okay, we may not rent it at all. But if you say three years, and the cost that it's taking to do it, we're going to rent the heck out of it.
So maybe that's what we should do then. Three years, rent the heck out of it. 10 years, so 10 years, you're only going to rent it to five people over 10 years.
It's my choice, there's no controls on how I rent it.
Okay.
There isn't anything in the bylaws that says what I have to and I don't have to.
Of the 33 that we have on this sheet, two, I can't remember Sean's or Jason's one, how many of these are active?
I can count real quick for you.
I'm up to seven, six, and then with the one by center seven, that shouldn't be on here. Kind of expired already.
How do we know? Oh, well, you don't know if they got reapplied, or do we know? I guess, I'm just curious now that it came up. There's 33 in Stearns County. What's the population of Stearns County? 150? 158,000? So there's 33, and not all of these are active.
Mr. Chair, I just quickly counted 27 active.
Okay. So 27 active. And Jason's right, there's only one that is in place, that's three. And then now, the one that the board will have to decide what they do with that. So, where are we at? Oh, how many years? Sean, Jason, me have said things, so let's, if we do recommend approval, let's come up with the number of years. So you guys have to weigh in.
I would propose 10.
I'd go with 10, just because of the cost prohibitive of going with a lesser number for the applicant. Because if there is problems, it'll be brought back before us, and it'll be remedied that way. It's not going to remedy it by a three-year term. It's, if there's problems, he'll get dragged back and then closed down.
And that's a good point. Even if it's 10 years or 20 years, if there's violations, it comes back before us. And right now, with the mood of the commission, I'd say they'd have problems. But, so that's a good point. If it's three years, or 10 years, or 15 years, there's problems, it's going to come back.
That's what I've said in the past. If we make it 10 or 15 years, if there's a problem, they lose their license right away, and it's all over with.
So, Rich?
I'm leaning towards three years. It's a short enough span of time, but long enough span of time for people to make adjustments in the neighborhood. And it also gives Munson Township some time to look at what's going on in their township and adjust if they need to.
Okay, so let's do it this way. Jason and Sean kind of said 10 years first, so let's see who's in support of 10 years, and then go from there. So who's in support of, if we do recommend approval to 10 years, raise your hand. One, two.
You want to say three?
You want to say three? Okay, who's in favor, if we do recommend approval for three years? Raise your hand.
I'll go three-year, five, whatever.
Well, we have to go one or the other. Okay? So for, so then, the consensus is three years, if that's what we're comfortable with. Or if you want to make a formal motion, we can. Otherwise, this is kind of a straw poll here. You're okay with that?
We'll see with the motion.
With the motion. But I mean, for now, yeah, for now, the three years, we're consensus, move forward to three years, and then we'll see what happens. Okay. So the, I guess we're at a point, oh, the question I had, which Ken asked last time, the local contact. The other guy was seven minutes from his home to the place. What's, who's the contact, or do we know that?
I would have the applicant answer that question.
Okay. Gary, who's your onsite, you know, the person that's on call, kind of? Or don't you know yet? You'd get somebody, or?
Well, there wasn't anything. And in the controls, it said there had to be a local contact, but I'm the, I'm the person in charge, and my immediate neighbors, both, like I said, we have a general agreement. If there's any issues whatsoever, I'd be made aware immediately.
Is it a requirement? I forgot, just because Ken asked.
That's, I thought we made it a requirement that some, a local person had to be.
Heidi can answer that, or Angie?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you have, in the past, on some applications, required them to let us know who the contact person is and have it posted in the home, who the local caretaker is, if there's an emergency or something like that. You have done that on some permits in the past.
I just thought that was.
Well, if it's something we would do want to do, we can make it another condition, if that's something, again, if it does get recommended. Should we do the findings? Okay. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn. It is consistent with the zoning ordinance, Sections 4.18, 6.62, and 9.9, 6A of the Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, 439.
Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county listed applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. Under the business goals, both two and three, two is increase the value of the county economic production by ensuring that operations sustain our natural resources, in this case, the value for the lakes. And number three is acknowledge tourism's economic value and the prospective contribution of the industry to both diversity of county economic base and the potential for growth.
Number three, is the proposal compatible with existing neighborhood?
Mr. Chair, I would say it is compatible, because there's, there are no renovations or changes being made to it. It's still. It's still, are just going to be a home amongst homes.
And as the last one, I would say it is compatible for that reason, and it could be considered non-compatible because of the transient people. So, it's both, in my opinion. Five, other issues pertinent to the matter, township input, no. Federal, state, local permits, of course, with the conditions, the local permits. What did I skip for? That's what happens, you start losing me at the end. Four, how was, how has the applicant demonstrated the standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, we have the conditions. Ask for the staff report.
Okay. Sorry about that. So, five, the third item here, environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection, not applicable. Information submitted regarding value, property values, we received nothing. Public health, safety, traffic generation impacts, we heard a lot about the traffic generation concerns. Public service and facilities, including schools, parks, streets, and utilities, streets, the, the road, township road. Financial assurance required, there isn't any. Other issues pertinent to the matter. It's generated a lot of discussion. Okay. Findings are complete. Motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I will make a motion that we recommend approval of this application.
Mr. Chair, clarification for Member Blackburn. What's your date?
Oh, that would be December thirty-first, twenty, twenty-four.
Okay. Sean moved to recommend approval with a three-year term. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Ken Mossman, Mossman seconds that motion. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor of recommending approval to the county board, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign? Okay, let's do a roll call. All those who are in favor of recommending the approval with a three-year limit to the county board, say aye. If you're opposed to it, say nay. Rich Blankish?
Nay.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Jason Wienerman?
Nay.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Chair votes no. Tie vote, three to three. This, too, will go to the county board for their, the discussion on the issue. Is somebody going to follow up with Monson Township, or can you? Heidi, I mean, Angie?
Yes, what specifically just sort of?
Well, two things, just to confirm that it was sent and that they got it, just for the record. And then next month, let's just enter that into the record because we all know they got it.
I'll do that.
Yep. Is it still Ms. Bean in yet?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair. And also, we've signed up all of our townships to receive the meetings-on-demand information, but I know not everyone's keen on the technology, but I will confirm with Bonnie that she did get the letter.
And then, so I think that would be, in order to, one, make sure they got the, they got the notice that if there is an issue, that they get future notices, and I doubt that there was. And then, two, just to let them know that it was a live discussion and empower them what they can do, if they want to do it, so. Pardon me? Oh, yeah, that would be a good third question, if they know anything. Dan's not with us anymore, so he can't answer that, hultouse. But maybe somebody remembers, that would be, and then just get back to us, either at the next meeting or send an email to everybody. The next order of business is number seven, which of course has been tabled indefinitely. There's no set date, they just tabled it, so it's up to them to bring that one back. Number.
Do we have to make a motion to table it?
Do we need the motion to table it? Okay, yep. Ken moves the table item number seven at the applicant's request.
I'll second it.
And Mike Perrell seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, that item is tabled. Item number eight, minutes of the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting. We get a motion on the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Rich moves to approve the minutes from October twenty-first.
I'll second it.
Ken seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Minutes are approved. Other, other discussions? Commissioner Persky, some of us received a letter about, from the Central Township, about milk and honey, about violating the number of events that they had. It was a page, a little over a page, letter. Do you want to share what you know?
Um, just as, because I'm the commissioner in that district, I've heard a phone call from the resident, Ozzy, about more than the number of, more than the number of events that have taken place there. And so, they've taken their concerns to the township. Township has now written a letter to myself and environmental, and we're, administration, we're going to be meeting and talking about how to deal with the, the potential violations that have taken place there, so, yeah.
Okay.
It's, okay.
Just so everybody's aware of that, and if you want to see the letter, certainly ask for a copy of it from Angie or Joel, and they, they can share it with you.
Mr. Chair, I, I want to validate the last hour and forty-five minutes we spent on these two vacation home rentals, okay? And, and, and also, that with the three-three vote, that puts me in a position to, to maybe inform the board about where we are with that. That being said, I, I want to validate the no votes. They could be the same for both, but I, I, I'd like to just validate the no votes on, on, on the decision. So, Mr. Blankish, any particular reason on the no votes?
I think it needs to go to the local level. If, if communication, there seems to be a communication breakdown between residents and their township. Sounds kind of familiar, familiar with another township in the area.
Okay.
But, you know, I think those people deserve a chance to speak to their local.
Okay. Jeff, you were a no vote?
Yes, I was. Largely because when it was obvious that it was going to be a tie vote, there are some commissioners that don't really appreciate a lot of what we do, the heavy lifting. And, you know, what, we, we get criticized, and specifically on solar. And, you know, some of us feel passionate about that. We do a lot of heavy lifting, we do the site visits and everything else. And then, pretty much what we say and do gets discounted completely. So, ninety-nine point six percent of what we do is on your consent agenda. We spend three and a half hours here, getting paid a hundred dollars, do the site visits, everything else. And really, sometimes, we really don't get appreciated much. So, maybe those commissioners now can step it up and chair a meeting, and now listen to the public. If I'd be them, if I'm the commissioner that's criticizing what we're doing, have the public hearing that these people can talk to them, because ultimately, you guys make the decision, we're recommending. So, and then, of course, help fix the issue. You know, we fixed a lot of issues in all my time of the planning commission, and what do we get faced with? I'm too old, I'm too fat, I'm too white. Well, if we're going to do that, then maybe it's time that they do some heavy lifting for themselves.
Okay.
If you want me to be there to say that, I'd be happy to say that during the meeting. So, this is a big discussion, it's controversial, and normally, we fix these things. Well, this, I don't know if this is fixable at our level.
And I, I will validate your concerns about that. Again, take, for example, the, the shooting range. What, we went to one o'clock?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then, like I said, you guys.
Thirty-seven testimonies, I remember.
And then, and then you guys go and put it on a consent agenda, which means we're doing our job.
Yeah.
And by the way, I was hoping somebody would say that I wasn't too fat, but obviously, nobody did. So, thank, thank you.
They just like to, Jeff, they'd like to agree with you. Jason?
Good comeback.
For me, it was the duration of the, the permit. I, I thought the three-year was too short. And I believe the last applicant, who said for the expense and time going through this, he's going to rent the snot out of it.
Yeah.
And I, I, you know, and if, I don't know what's going to happen in Monson Township, but if they do choose to go ahead and do vacation rentals, I thought three years and you're done. For some of these folks who are making business decisions and retirement decisions, I thought that the three-year timeframe was unreasonable.
And, and that's a, is that the only reason?
The only reason, yep.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And, and I don't want to.
And how about the yes votes?
Well, the yes votes are just confirming that they, I'm, I'm fine with what they want because we've confirmed those in the past. I want to know why we reject it.
My problem with Monson Township is this isn't the first one. They've been noticed before and haven't made any comments. They've had their chance.
Not really, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. When we're done, should we? Okay. Well, if you're okay, then go ahead.
I think the reason, on the, the residence, they, they've been told that it's all about county levels, so they feel like going to the township. Back to Joe, and he said, I heard about it, and he did get a notification, but from what I understood in reading the comprehensive plan, and I understood it that they're supposed to be involved in this process prior to notifying the residents. I don't know, I'll go back and read that, but I think that's part of it, is that the township isn't.
Ms., Mr. Chair, can Teresa come up before we're going to hear her? Because she's not getting picked up at all on the tape, so.
I'm sorry. It's a valid point. Do you want, mind just coming up?
Yep, please.
It's a good point, but I, I'm, I guess I should, should have thought of that. We want to make sure, as long as it's a valid point and it's on the record, that it's heard. So, just repeat that.
Say my name again?
Please.
Teresa Bransner, two one zero six seven Elkview Circle. The question is, is why isn't the township more involved or, or have made comments earlier? I believe that's because most of the residents believe that the township no longer has authority over some of these instances, so they don't even go to them anymore because they, they have this belief that the county is in charge of, over the township. And that's why, when I contacted our township, I was like, do you even know anything about this? And they said, well, the first we heard about it was the notices. But that's why, when I was reading, and like I said, I was reading in the, the comprehensive plan, I, I understood it that they're supposed to be involved prior to notifying the residents. So, when I contact them, they have more information on it. But they said, well, our, our meeting's not coming up till December first. And I said, well, that's too late for this, so we're going to this meeting. But they said, we, we did talk about it on our Monday meeting, and we need to get something resolved here because people are, are asking us now because it's happening more often. So, I think that's one of the reasons. We just thought that the county kind of took everything over with the comprehensive plan, and the township was out of the picture.
And what happens is, oftentimes, what happens is, unfortunately, people become reactive instead of proactive. And so, I will say this, we've all were involved with the comprehensive plan. We had a cross-section of township officials and, and different people from different groups in that comprehensive plan. I will say this, at the Albany meeting, I attended both public hearings. At the Albany meeting, a lot of township officials were there. And again, right or wrong, township officials, especially the more smaller townships, if you get out in western Stearns County, I grew up in Spring Hill Township, they don't have the means, Belgrade, Bruton, they don't have the means to do the planning and zoning. So, they turn that all over to the county, and the county's, you know, good enough to do it for them, and they do. But then, it's not just because they don't have input, but that they, they, they're removed from that first process. However, at that Albany meeting, a lot of township said, nobody listens to us, nobody. And remember, part of the comprehensive plan was that we were going to have that check sheet, and I asked for it numerous times. And again, I'm going to put the criticism where it belongs, it's not with the staff here. Ms. Benson got pretty pointed, and so, oh, yeah, we're going to do it, we do do that. We haven't seen it. I haven't seen that checklist where the township's been contacted. And when, and what I suggested to Shelley at the time, well, then, if they're not responding, get ahold of them before the meeting, say, Rich, you're on the township board, we haven't gotten comments from you. Did you discuss this? Or, and then if you say, no, we didn't, well, then that's on you. And then I would check that list and say, contact the township, they didn't discuss it, you know, that's on them. So, but the township feels, you feel they're not listening to you, they feel the county's not listening. Well, at the end of the day, I reach out to townships, and I have really, in my position, I would even be told not to do that, but I do it when I see something's coming up and I think they may or may not know about it. The solar applications now that are being approved with township input, when I get the application, and I, I think staff knows this, I immediately contact the township and say, there's a, a solar farm coming in your township. And in that case, they don't know because they're not receiving the notice. Well, then they became aware, and I tell them, get ahold of them, and ask them to send you. So, and that's not the only issue I reach out to. But I think most county people would say, well, don't do that, you're in a planning commission, don't, don't reach them. Well, I try to engage people to be proactive, that. So, now, Avon Township's put a moratorium on solar, Paintsville's having a public hearing on the twenty-second to use as an example. So, sometimes, we can't wait for things to happen, we have to make things happen. You, us, staff.
And, and I think they don't happen until they show up at my doorstep. The process, to me, is like, I don't pay attention, but now it's in my neighborhood. And so, then you're trying to catch up with the process. But I did hear the comment from our chairman of the, on our township that it's, he said, we need to get in touch with the county because those are things that we need to know as a township, is how many of these are happening in our township because people are starting to ask. So, that, that's why they did bring it up at the meeting. But I, I'm just glad that it's, it's moving in a direction where they can all maybe come together, and thank you.
Would the moratorium, thank you, would the moratorium on that, would be, would that be the same process as solar farms?
Yes.
I mean, Avon Township did it within two months.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chair, Teresa, I would just like to add, and I'll offer this to Monson Township as well. We're happy to come out either at that same meeting or a different meeting and, and explain the process and try to catch them up. Heidi and Jen and I have done that a lot in the last six months with our township. So, I'll offer that as well when I talk to Monson.
And my two cents' worth would be, don't show up at that meeting, at their annual meeting. No, I'm just saying, that, that, that's, I'd meet with them before and empower them, and they can call a special meeting. I know townships always say, well, we only meet once a month. You can call a special meeting. And again, if it's important enough, you'll do it. But I think they should be one-on-one with you, that you can say, yeah, this is what you can do, if you do. Now, you're not going to tell them to do a moratorium, but they can't act dumb and say, we can't do one. Yes, you can do one. And quite frankly, at this point, maybe in that township, that'd be the thing to do. Slow it down, get your arms around this, and then go from there.
And did it, you know, I have nothing against the people on now, maybe this happened in the past, some of the past. People didn't want to be in charge of the shoreline stuff, so they said, let the county do it. Well, now you've got people who maybe are interested in putting in their two cents' worth, and then they should come back because that would help us out a great deal, then it wouldn't come here.
So, I have a question for Mr. Persky. So, the county board's going to be in the thirtieth, right? So, they will have the discussion on the two items, that's coming off the agenda. It's not a public hearing, but the county board has public comment before the board meeting.
However, you cannot comment on issues that are on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You were really, you had a great thought, and you were really going down the grid.
But you can write all of the commissioners a letter of telling what your thoughts are.
Right, that you can do.
Or call them.
Well, I think the biggest thing the board should do is have their, my God, they've had a, their own public hearing on every solar application. You certainly can have a public hearing on these two issues and then vet some of the stuff that they're, and don't, don't show up with ten people like you did tonight, show up with fifty people.
It's, it'll be interesting to see, and that's why I asked your reasons for rejection. The, the, the positive ones, the one that, on the affirmative side, it, it matched your checklist, that you were all okay with it, that's why I didn't ask your rationale. And if you were in conflict with anything, it should have gone into the recommendations, and then so that it would have been remedied. So, I'm concerned about, was concerned about the negative votes. And my recommendation, as of ten twenty-two tonight, is that I'm going to recommend we have public hearings on both of them. It's going to be my recommendation.
And I think that, that's a good, that's a good recommendation. Speaking of applications, if we get a chance, my term's up on the planning commission. I've reapplied. There's other openings and other. There's other openings and other commissions, so if you haven't gone to that link, I think only those members of committees that are, their terms ending, were notified, but there's a link for all different boards that you can look at if you're interested in surveying something else.
Is anybody else coming on?
Well, we don't know that I'm coming off yet. I've re-applied.
I mean, that your term is up. Your term is. Jason.
I got the notification.
Oh, I'm, yes, sorry.
So, I'm, I'm serving one of your terms.
So, so three of us?
My understanding, yes.
Three of us, and we're all open for reappointment?
And all reapply.
You want to keep your hat, because then we, I mean, we know we should be looking for one?
Well, I apply, yeah.
Oh, you're reapplying, okay.
Yeah.
So, that's why I brought it up, just in case someone did get notified.
What if all of us over fifty-five years old resigned at the end of the year? Well, that's what the big thing, Mike Williams had, we got all these people over fifty-five.
And staff and Commissioner Persky convey that thought, because again, that is offensive to, more than just me.
There was something offensive on that, on that link that I looked at, one of the positions that were open, that offended me.
And I, and I mean, again, the, the point is, let's do, we've gotten along real well, we aren't on agree, well, don't do it on the record, but, but we'll do it. But again, let's all work together, and I, I, I tell you, when I was on the city council, we had a lot of committees. When they did the work that we're doing, I appreciated that, because again, they did the heavy lifting, they did the work, and yep, I didn't agree with them all the time either, but I didn't bash them, or I didn't try to get them replaced, or, you know, that. So, let's get beyond that, hopefully. But, anything else?
Mr. Chair, just real quick, so then I don't have to send you at all an email tomorrow. Maybe you heard this on the board agenda, that's how I figured it out, but the USS Solar Meadowbrook, one megawatt solar that the planning commission and the board denied, has appealed. So, just realize that we're now in a lawsuit on that one and cash. I have no other updates, other than that's where we're at.
Isn't it great to work with people that we have before us that sue us? I mean, that always makes me feel comfortable. Oh, sure they could, but let them do it. Yep. Okay. With that, meeting adjourned.